Please acknowledge so by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. I'll let staff get into a little more detail on that after I'm done with my general comments. But you'll need to give your name and address, and then you can provide your comments. Please, when speaking on item, do not repeat comments that were previously made by another speaker. Just acknowledge your agreement with the previous speaker. If you have anything new to say, though, please feel free to share that. I will generally want to limit public comment to three minutes per person. And at the conclusion of public comments, the hearing, the public hearing will be closed. And then at that point, we will have discussion amongst the commissioners. In the past, applicants have often asked for time to rebut comments that were heard during the public comment hearing. I am not inclined to allow that because my thinking is that if you are doing your job, when you're planning your project and speaking with neighbors, you will have understood objections that might be raised, and you would have addressed those in your presentation. Then we'll go into discussion amongst the commissioners. Most of the cases involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. We will act on each one individually, variances considered first, then conditional use permits, and then finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the commission has the option of continuing an application to a future meeting. In the event of a continuance or denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have at least heard comments during the public comment period and during commissioner deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the original approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission for approval. It is also important to understand there's a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken, and the applicant or any interested party can request the city council to review and act on the case. The commissioner will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, we will take them out of order. If there are a large number of people here on one item, that item might be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. We will not start any new items after 11:00 PM. I don't know that that will be a difficulty tonight. The agenda is particularly heavy. So, back to my comment on taking items out of order. Normally, we do it because of large crowds, but I had a suggestion that item number one on the housing element is something that is likely to take extensive discussion. And I really would feel bad about making the applicants and the representatives for agenda items two and three sit through a lengthy discussion just to show, to go through their project. So I am going to propose that we move agenda item one to position three on the agenda, and we'll start with item two, if that is agreeable with everyone.
Yeah, agreeable.
All right, then if city staff could please just sort of describe for the public their various options for commenting, if they have comments during the course of the meeting.
Yes, I will do that. Thank you, Chair. As part of the open public hearing process, when announced by the chair, typically that is done after staff's presentation as well as the applicant's presentation and the opening of the public hearing process. You have the ability to comment on any project at the time of the agenda. In many ways, you could send in a chat, which is the bottom screen of the Zoom call. You could identify your comments via that option. You could also raise your hand physically on the screen. I can see everyone. And if I see your hand raised, I will call on you as I see them come before me. The other final option is to, there's a raise hand feature next to your name under the participant screen. If you go down to the very bottom, you'll see your participants link. Click on that. You'll see a number 27, which is the number of attendees. Click on that. It'll highlight a new screen on the right-hand side of your screen with all the names of the attendees. Find your name. You can right-click on that, and it gives you the option of raising your hand to provide comments. And so that is the best way of having your public comments heard tonight are those three options. Chair, back to you.
Thank you. So first of all, we'll start with a general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to address the commission on items that are under our purview but are not on the agenda for this evening. So I'll pause for a moment here. If there's any member of the public who has a comment, a general comment under our purview that is not on the agenda, please indicate that now.
Chair, I am looking through the attendees. I don't see a raised hand at the moment. Looking at the screen at the participants, I also do not see a raised hand at this moment.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period. And we will move ahead then with agenda item number two, the conditional use permit, CUP 20-19 at 1151 Oxford Road. If staff could please provide their report, please.
Thank you, Chair. The item for agenda item number two is a request of a conditional use permit for 1151 Oxford Road, CUP number 20-19, for the purposes of remodeling an existing Rose Garden tea room. The remodeling, in this case, the expansion of that building, including the remodeling of that building, triggers a conditional use permit, which is why it's before us tonight. The applicant is looking at a scope of work that includes the remodeling of the building, which essentially is the preservation of the tea room as well as the preservation of the herb room, with the exception of some outdoor space for outdoor dining, some indoor space for indoor dining, and some other various elements of accessory units or accessories square footage of the building are being proposed to be remodeled as well. But the overall intent of this project is to revitalize the building, preserve certain sections of the building, but most importantly, look to satisfy current building code standards as well as current LA County Public Health standards with relation to the use of the building. Going back a couple or several years ago regarding the EIR or the Environmental Impact Report that was adopted with the Education and Visitor Center project, that environmental impact report plus the various conditional use permits or entitlements of that project set very strict standards for the use of that property. And the one that matters the most with respect to this project is the vehicle cap, which is the number of vehicles that are allowed to enter and exit the property at any given calendar day. That number is built into the code, and it's about 2,900 vehicles. And so that is the cap regardless of what occurs on the property as to what occurs in terms of renovation or remodeling of the property as well. With the scope of the project, and so those, those conditions of the EIR still govern this project, still govern this property. And so going back to a little bit of the scope of this project in relation to the drawings, you can tell based off of the scope, which is found on sheet A12, that the remodeling of this building is going to result in the decrease of the occupancy of this building to respect of the outdoor space that's being reduced in terms of occupancy. Indoor spaces are also being reduced in terms of occupancy. And some of the building is being demolished. Other sections of the building are being expanded. So that being said, in relation to the findings associated with the conditional use permit, staff is able to meet all the findings related to the CUP on the basis that the project is, in some case, being reduced in size in a manner that reduces the occupancy load of the building. Moreover, a large part of this project is a preservation of a majority of the building that is considered the historic portions of this building. The last component, of course, is the ever-important EIR, which established the criteria or the vehicle caps for this property. And those are obligated of this property and this project to be satisfied and met. And so with that being said, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number CUP 20-19 and approval of resolution PCR 21-02. And also that the planning commission find that the project is exempt from CEQA with respect to section 15301 under Class 1 Existing Facilities. And so at this point, I open for questions.
So do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
No.
I just, I had one that came to mind when you were giving your presentation. I'm just curious, with that vehicle cap being so key, do we get any, does the city get any kind of reports from the library on vehicle usage?
That's actually a great question. The Huntington Library staff, and I see Randy Schulman here, and he's, he's the head of, you know, that, that project, and of course, the project back in a couple of years ago. He is the one who does provide the city with the annual progress reports in relation to the EIR. And those reports are due every January. And I would say that the record shows that, that the Huntington Library has method obligation as well as shown that there's been little to no impact in relation to that project and any project subsequent to that EIR.
Great, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to give whatever presentation they might have for the proposal.
Great. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Randy Schulman. I'm the vice president for Advancement and External Relations at the Huntington. I grew up in San Marino and have worked at the Huntington for 20 years. And I am pleased to be with you tonight with two other representatives. One is Steve Farnath, the project architect from ARG Architects, which was also the architect that we used on the restoration of the Huntington's Art Gallery in 2008, and Audra Eng, who works in our Facilities and Security Division as a project manager. The project before you tonight, as described, is an improvement to something that's a central part of the visitor experience at the Huntington. It is a historic preservation project foremost for a building that has been in decline. And we have wanted to work on this building, and the COVID moment, when all of the facilities were closed in the springtime, gave us a chance to really evaluate it. And we realized that it was time to work on this. And if we could figure out how to do this sooner than later, that even when we reopen at the end of the pandemic, we have a building that is now designed to allow people to sit for their part if need be, those kinds of things. But meanwhile, it was just really timely, and so here we are. I'm gonna share the screen, and when Steve presents, he will go through the slides. Let me just say a couple more things before I leave you. Again, we talked about the fact that this has code upgrades, seismic upgrades, and is important for historic preservation and the overall visitor experience. The great thing about the project is that the sightlines of the project from the historic core of the garden feature the historic building first and foremost, and then the ancillary parts of the building, which are not visible normally anyway, are still not visible. And we've now given ourselves the ability to have indoor/outdoor seating related to the tea service, which is something that we've wanted to do because really, it's about being outside more than anything. So I think this strikes a great balance. On this first slide, you see way in the middle where the tea room sits in relation to the property. It's many, many, almost 1,000 feet, I think, from the property line or more. So it's right in smack in the middle of the property. And I'm gonna ask Steve to give the presentation, and then we are available for questions as needed. Steve Farnath.
Thank you, Randy. Am I being heard?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks, Randy. I'm Steve Farnath. I'm a principal architect for this project, representing Architectural Resources Group, 260 East Second Street in Los Angeles. I'll give you a brief summary of the project, as Randy said. Next, please. Next slide, Randy.
There we go, okay.
Thank you. The, the building was constructed by Henry Huntington in 1911, so it's part of the original core of the property. He constructed it as a billiard room and bowling alley for himself, I, I think, just to get out of the house some nights. Anyway, after his death and the creation of the foundation, it was repurposed to be a tea house and lunch venue. And it has essentially stayed in this role over 90 years. Next, please. And over those years, it's seen a lot of additions, which have not been necessarily well-conceived, and its building systems have not been upgraded in a very, very long time. In addition to the additions themselves, the, the old building, the historic building, is constructed of very lightly reinforced concrete frame with infill clay tile walls, which is really a seismic hazard in a way. And one of the primary goals here is to seismically upgrade it. It's never seen any seismic improvements in its lifetime. Next, please. This is the plan of the building as it stands today. The dark blue is the original tea room, the original billiard room, and currently, the tea room over the last 90 years. And the long, light blue swath was at one time Huntington's bowling alley. It was early on remodeled and half destroyed to become a kitchen and servery. It still is underneath all of the changes. It's still there. All of the areas in the brown are additions made later and generally not very well-constructed in wood frame as well as in the gray. These are outdoor pavilions and outdoor eating areas on, on slab. Next, please. Our proposal is to remove the later additions, all that was in the brown that you saw earlier, and essentially return to the original blue core of the building, rehabilitate that core, and then add a series of elements back, in many ways, pretty close to the original footprint. In this plan, this is our proposed floor plan, the tea room exists as it exists today and as it has always existed. It will be a fine dining area. At the top of the screen is a rectangular space we refer to as the herb room. There's currently an herb dining room made of wood frame. We'll take that off and build a new, slightly bigger room with a outdoor circulation deck that overlooks the herb garden to the west. And below, at the bottom of the screen, is a semi-circular element, and that will be an outdoor pavilion, basically an open loggia, which opens out into the Shakespeare Garden on all three sides and provides outdoor dining. And connecting those three dining spaces are new lobby and restroom and other facilities, all up to current code, and very generous in terms of square footage to really recognize that the need for space in this current COVID and probably future COVID environment. And then to the right is the kitchen wing. This will be essentially reconstructed around the old elements. The remodeling, the additions will be removed and then replaced. The kitchen will be brought up to modern food service standards in all respects. And as mentioned earlier, the historic core of the building will be seismically upgraded, but the entire building will be brought up to current energy code standards, Title 24 of the California Building Code. So overall, it will be a highly functioning historic building with, with these new elements, all of which open seamlessly out into the garden. Next, please. This gives you a sense of the scale of the project. The historic billiard room, tea room, is the white element to the, to the front of the screen. And across the back is, is essentially our, our new elements that cross the building. On the right side is the open, half-circular pavilion roofed in a mixture of lattice glass and clay tile roof. And then to the left side of the screen, under the clay tile roof, is the herb room overlooking the herb garden. And moving off to the right side of the screen, the flat roof is the top of the kitchen wing. Next, please. Thank you. This is an elevation, just to give you a sense of scale of new and old. The original tea room on the upper elevation gives you a sense of the scale and size of it. Our new additions are very careful to align with the cornice lines and the primary horizontal levels of the historic building, not set back from the original building and essentially staying within the scale, but being slightly differentiated so you can tell the difference between old and new. Next, please. And this is a view of the building from the east side. The pavilion on the right is the open-air roofed outdoor dining area. The historic tea room is the white element to the left. Next, please. And finally, this is a view from the west. This gives you a look at the herb room and the herb porch. While the room on the east side is a completely open-to-the-air space, the new herb room will be multipurpose. It will have rolling doors that will allow it to be open in, in good weather and closed and conditioned space in times of heat or cold. So it will serve both, both purposes. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Randy. Thank you very much. We're very excited about this project, and we think the end result will be a tremendous improvement over the, the existing structure and a restoration of the elements of the tea room. Thank you.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just have one question. The two lions out in front, they're not shown in the drawings. Are they to be retained?
I hope so. We believe so.
Yes.
I have a question. How are the ADA compliance being met? I didn't see where the ramps and stuff were.
I can, I can answer before, I, I can just tell you that what you see in the front of the building is no longer the main entrance. So while that can be used on occasion, around the east side of the building, there is ADA compliant. And that's really also because the best spots in that room to look out on the Rose Garden are right where that door is. And so we want to actually use it for seating, not for people moving around. So around the side, we can greet people. We also will have a place for strollers and coats and things so that that doesn't have to go into the room. It, it has a better effect on the experience.
If you, if you're in a wheelchair, then you're entering from the east side.
Yeah, and everybody wanted to try the inside, so it's not just people in wheelchairs.
Okay, okay.
I have three questions. And I'm sorry, this first question I thought of after the staff report, so it may be directed towards staff. I'm not sure. But I am just curious, when you did the occupancy count, did you include the Huntington staff? And did, I guess the first question is, did that include the Huntington staff that would be working in the tea room? And did that have any impact on the parking requirements, since that's something we have to look at?
Randy, do you want me to answer that one?
Let me just say that the, remember, the occupancy for this building really doesn't affect parking or any, that's, it's a totally separate issue. You might see that it's, it's a decline in the number of, total number of people. And the reason for that is that there was a time where this was both the tea room and the central kitchen and cafe for the whole place. It's no longer serving that purpose. It's only serving as a tea room. So that's why it seems like a bit of an anomaly, but it's not.
Okay.
It's just because of that loss of that use, which occurs somewhere else.
Okay. My next question is, is that it seems to me that that herb room is gonna be really hot because it's facing west and it seems to be very open. And I guess I'm just curious as to what the plans are environmentally, you know, just in terms of like offload, you know, heat offload from the windows or whatever it is. Like, how will that be addressed? Because it does seem like a very open space that's gonna get full sun.
Steve. Well, we have about a six-foot overhang on the west over that porch area, which we think will block, the bulk of the sun will be blocked from that. Well, still, at some moments of the day, we're gonna get, you know, low-angled, west-facing sun.
Yeah.
But for the most part, the, the setback area of the herb room is, is, is covered with a pretty broad overhang. So, and of course, then the new addition is going to have high-performance glass and fully insulated on the ceilings and floors and areas of solid wall.
Okay. And then my last question, just because it's curious, I'm just curious. It seems to me that you guys are gonna have co-ed restrooms? Am I seeing that correctly?
So this is a first for us. We're going to have restrooms that are not gender-specific.
Okay.
And...
I applaud that. Very progressive of you. I just, I want to make sure that I, that I was really seeing that accurately.
It is entirely intentional. It is entirely intentional. The other thing about the Huntington over the last five years is a lot of the facilities we've built also have family or, or separate restrooms. So we're, we're giving people choices where we, you know, and there's also a CUP for a lactation room or a nursing mother's room, which we're about to build, but COVID got in the way of that. But again, that was a very deliberate thing on behalf of accessibility.
Thank you.
And anybody who's been to the tea room in the last 25 years knows that the restrooms were the sorest point of contention. We're not gonna let that happen again.
Yeah, so I had a question specific as well to the restrooms, but if it's a gender-neutral restroom or a co-ed restroom, I, I guess you would be very thoughtful of the partitions that are gonna be placed in the restroom?
Yeah, there'll be full-height partitions. Each toilet stall will be a separate room and have its own exhaust, et cetera.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Great. My only question was also, was I seeing it correctly that it was a unisex restroom? And now my question's answered.
My question too.
All I cared about are the lions.
Don't worry, Howard. The lions will be there.
I gotta go back and look at a picture of them. Are they lions or fool dogs?
I think they're lions.
No, these are lions.
They're well carved. They're beautifully done.
So I will now move to the public hearing portion of this project and ask if there are any members of the public who wish to comment for, against, or about this project? If so, please indicate now.
Hi, Christine. I see your hand raised, and so you'll be number one. I don't see any more hands raised either electronically or on the screen. Reminder, you can raise your hand to the video, or you can raise your hand to the link available to the Zoom. So right now, Christine, if you wanna mute yourself, you're up.
Thank you. My name's Christine Bender. I've lived since 1986 at 2335 Sherwood Road, and I have been to the Huntington many times and taken friends and family members for tea. And I'm speaking strongly in support of this much-needed renovation. I'm an Easterner. I'm still very scared of earthquakes. And the thought that that building will now be seismically improved, to me, is just critically important. And I think the experience of having tea at the Huntington, which has always been special, will become even nicer. It's, you know, I, I can't help but speak about the restrooms. I took an elderly friend in a wheelchair for tea a few years ago, and I was really concerned she would need to negotiate that old bowling alley and get into a very cramped restroom space. It just wasn't appropriate for something as special as tea at the Huntington. So with these needed renovations and the beautiful views we were preserving, I strongly urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Okay, Chair, I don't see any other hands raised on the screen. Give me one second here. Nope, but no additional hands raised on the screen or via the Zoom.
All right. In that case, I will now close the public comment portion of the discussion, and we'll move on to deliberation amongst the commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Chang.
Yes, I'm very pleased with the proposal. I think it's a very well thought out addition or renovation of the existing tea room. I think it does hold true to the original architectural detailing. What I did notice was the cornicing details on the on the front parapet wall is actually being placed back in that image that the architect did show, which was very nice because, you know, I was there and I did notice that was not present, but I think it's a very well conceived project and I'd be in support of approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I too support it. I think it's a very good project. I like that they're preserving the historic nature and I especially like upgrades to seismic pet peeve of mine and energy for sure. So congratulations to the Huntington. And continue the good work. I enjoyed my walk. Looking at.
Commissioner Brody.
Yeah, I concur with what has been said. Excellent project. That I think will result in a something that we'll be treasuring for decades to come.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Boyle.
I don't think I have anything to add, except that, you know, all of the previous commissioners have spoken my feelings as well. So I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki.
I support the project completely.
Thank you. Well, I am going to make it unanimous, although I will comment, I think everybody was sort of awed by the design features, but I'll sort of remind the group that we were here to consider the conditional use permit. And so I I am assuming everyone has been able to make the findings as I have for all the the criteria for the conditional use permit. And although we're not here to discuss design, I will say, because I have to say, I was also overwhelmed. This was just a really exceptionally well thought out design. The way it preserves the historic elements of the building and then integrates them into a more contemporary use of space, I just thought was just masterful. So my kudos. So do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve conditional use permit number CUP 20-18.
One second. Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Don't we also have to move to approve PCR?
You are correct.
Although that is a concern of mine, that's not on the agenda.
It's written in the staff report.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. All right. So I'll amend my motion. That's incident on the agenda. I got to find that number. PCR, help me.
21-02.
21-02. Thank you. Okay, with my amended motion, you amended second?
Yes, amended second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle.
Yes.
And Chair Dustin.
Yes.
Motion.
I have one just sort of after comment for both staff and Huntington staff. In the you probably will come before this body or in front of the design review committee in the future, and I would just encourage you to sort of integrate with each other ahead of time to set up access for people because usually we'll get our packet on Friday night and then Saturday and Sunday are not days of business. Tuesdays, the Huntington is closed. So that really leaves us Monday and only Monday and maybe Wednesday morning to get over there to see it. And legally, we're obligated to visit the site. So if I would just ask in the future that city staff and Huntington staff sort of coordinate to get that out to everybody quickly, that would be appreciated. But congratulations on a great project. So let's see, that takes us now to agenda item number three. This is design review DRC 19-44 HP. Property identified as accessory parcel number 5323-016-030. A vacant lot located between 527 and 585 Winthrop Road. If we could have the staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The applicant is requesting to construct a new single story residence along with a detached two car garage. As mentioned earlier, the site is currently vacant and has never been developed before. The current property owner has presented two prior application, one time to the DRC, which that was back in 2017. It was a two story design and the DRC denied the project based on incompatibility with the neighborhood. It was a two story design. And again, in 2019, the applicant was in front of this this body, the planning commission requesting for approval for a two story home. But during the first hearing, the planning commission cited concern with removal of eight trees as a result of the new building footprint and that the new home would be two story and the commission was not in support of those two issue. Subsequently, the applicant withdrew the application in March of 2019. Since that time, since started in May of 2020, the applicant started working with staff on a new design. And tonight we are presenting to you a single story design with a detached two car garage. Staff is able to make the scale and compatibility finding for the neighborhood. Being that this is a single story home designed in the minimal traditional style. Staff has concern about the plate height and removal of some minor trees behind the garage. But overall, staff is in support of the project and is able to make the finding for this project with recommendation noted on the last page of the staff report as condition for this project. Staff did not provide a resolution for this project tonight. That being, we would like to see the commission's common and your vote before we come back with a resolution. So at this time, I only offer you the recommended condition for this project. And I do have one clarification to note, and that is located on page four of the staff report under neighborhood approval and objection letter. I have noted that the property owner at 580 Limits Grove submitted a objection letter. That letter is in fact requesting for the project plans. The neighbor, the resident is not objecting to the project and that resident was provided the project plan today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
I do.
Please.
Two questions. First, because it's a vacant lot, it was very difficult for me when I was looking at it because there's no story poles and I've become very spoiled with all the story pole and and all that. And so my question involves the setback and how it relates to the other houses on the block. Would it be what I would call the, you know, go along with the prevailing trend setback?
Ask Commissioner Wright. The required setback for this project is 20 25 feet. And when you look at the site plan on the first page of the plans, the project is providing the setback of the two adjacent neighbors. So looking to the right hand side of the project site, which is the existing ranch home, that setback would be somewhat of an outlier because that home, the orientation of that lot is more horizontal than vertical, the subject lot and the lot to the west. But if you look to the west, the existing two story neighbors at 527 Winthrop Road, it has the same setback as the proposed setback at 25 feet. And also, I would like to point out that the placement of the the footprint of this new home is quite limited, being that they are trying to avoid a removal as many trees as possible, but nonetheless, it will involve removing two trees.
Thank you, because that was my my next question was about the trees. So the project is, as it stands, would only because for some reason, in what I was looking at their tree report, I thought, although they may not be subject to our ordinance, I thought they said they were going to remove trees five to 10. Numbers five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, five trees.
Architect can certainly speak to that, but for trees that do fall within the purview of the city's current ordinance and the tree removal permit requirement, that would only be tree number nine and tree number 12. Which is clearly noted on the updated site plan.
Okay, and are you ready to? I'm sorry. Are you recommending that tree 12 remain? Wasn't that one of the ones I just that you were recommending to remain because of the garage and reduce the garage size?
Right, actually, keeping tree number 12 on site would not reduce the garage site any anymore than what the co require. As a matter of fact, what the applicant is proposing is to have a an additional storage area behind a garage, which fit very well be reduced in a manner that can accommodate the long term survival of those trees.
Right. And any replacement required as a result of the removal?
Yes, there are required replacements. The architect will speak to that. I did spoke with him earlier today and there was a tree removal permit previously approved by the city's urban forester.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I along the lines of what Commissioner Wright was talking about, I just am really curious. Is there not a requirement to have story poles and to give us access to the vacant lot so that we can fully assess the property?
Good question.
The story pole requirement is intended to provide a silhouette and the bulk of two story building. The code does not require story pole for single story building, being that this is a single story home staff elected not to require story pole for this project.
Okay, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I think that, you know, when maybe it's something that we can explore when we are dealing with a vacant lot. And this is not, we have no reference for what we're looking at, that when we are dealing with a vacant lot, that we do require story poles so that we can just so that we can imagine it, especially because neighbors are going to be affected in terms of privacy, because this is something that hasn't existed before, especially with tree removals. I mean, yeah, I would. So moving forward, that's something that I would really like for us to see if the other commissioners and city staff, you know, think that that's a reasonable request.
I think it's a reasonable request because I would have really liked to have seen a silhouette, but from a practical standpoint, I think this is probably the last vacant lot in the city. So I don't know how many times this will ever happen again.
Well, I mean, I know of a few properties that are thinking of splitting their parcels, so.
Well, in that situation, yeah.
So I think that we should, you know, just leave that on the table.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? I have a couple of questions for staff. So on the plans, it says in the in the elevation specifications section, it states for some of the materials or equal when it names a product or a feature. But the door or window schedule does not say or equal. So when that's the case, when there's a discrepancy, is the applicant allowed to substitute a product? And if they are, who determines what is qualified as an equal product?
So I thank you, Chair, for the question. I'll address the concern about the window and door schedule. In this case, on this particular project plans, the window and door schedule has specifically identified the manufacturer of those products. In the case that the construction start and the property owner wishes to use another product from the city's pre approved material list, they would have the option to do that. Provided that the window details and the colors are able to match what the commission approved tonight. In terms of the material listed on the elevation page of pages, I'm sorry. The architect will have to come back to staff if they wish to use a product that is not specifically listed on that page. If the idea is to lean on the fact that or equal or similar or substitute is provided or noted on 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 the elevation, staff will still take into consideration as to the nature of the material, knowing that the city really encourage and advocate a use of natural material. And we certainly will stare away from artificial material or material that has that are not typically used with a particular type of architecture in the city. In the case that we're uncertain of those changes or substitute, the project may very well come back to the commission. And I should say that, of course, with construction as owners start doing their budget and and construction start, they oftentimes change their mind. But the reason why the commission does not see a lot of project coming back to you because of material or color changes, because the owner realized that the time it takes to come back to this commission and to provide revised plans to staff is actually quite cost ineffective. So they would just simply build what's on plans. And that's the reason why you don't see many of them coming back to you.
Thank you very much. And then my final question. I know that when a fence or a wall is constructed on a property line between two residences, a fence agreement needs to be signed by the adjoining property owner. What happens when an existing fence or wall is demolished? And then a new one is erected? Does a new agreement need to be obtained?
Yes, it does. First, before the city will allow the the installation of a new fence and knowing that there is an existing fence at that location, we need to first determine the ownership of that fence or that wall prior to issuing a permit to replace per se or to build a new wall or fence at the same location. We do ask for a new fence agreement from the adjoining neighbor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, then I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to please make their presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Dustin, my name is Kay Manly. We've reached decided moment in. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project in front of you. So as staff said, okay, presented, okay, this project had came to your review before and tonight we we have a very simple, small, single story house. First of all, okay, this is on a vacant lot between two existing houses. The the allowable for area, as you can see on A1, okay, allowable for area and the allowable lot coverage are the same. It's 2149 square feet. But in this case, this is a single story house, so the lot coverage control. As you go down the project information, okay, the living area of this house is slightly over 1300 square feet, three bedroom, two baths. The size is very comparable to the existing houses on the same street. And the maximum height of this house, okay, as presented is 13 feet 10 inches. So it is well lower than the existing houses because the the house on the east side, 585, which is a large home, is on a raised foundation, which is like one and a half foot above, okay, adjacent gray. And interiors and the and the plate height for that house right now is nine feet. And with a gable roof, a steeper gable roof that is well at like 17, 18 feet tall. On the other side, on the west side, there is an existing house, two story house. A like kind of like a kiccot style house with very steep roof. And for the setback left and right, our house, okay, on the east side, okay, there is, this is a driveway. So we are providing a nine foot setback from the east side. And the existing house on the east side has 17 feet nine inches from their house to the common property line. So the total separation between these two houses are roughly around 25 feet. On the west side, okay, we we have, okay, three sections. The closest section to the westerly property line is five feet. And the next door neighbor, okay, on the west side, they have a 20 foot driveway. So the total separation between the subject property of the new house and the existing west house is around 25 feet. And the footprint, okay, as staff mentioned before, okay, on the last submit, okay, we were proposing to to remove quite a number of trees. In this proposal, okay, we have made significant reduction of the full plan. Okay, as you can see, along the west property line, okay, we have three sections. The purpose is try to save tree number five, six, Uh, the purpose is try to save number, tree number five, six, seven, and eight. Okay, which, okay, we, we were proposed it to remove last time. And, and then there is only number nine along the side, okay? So, um, because, uh, we, we, we tried to fit in two bedrooms there. And there's, okay, um, no more, no more room that we can cut into the footprint. So then we have to apply to remove this tree and it was approved by Sammy Astral, um, the, um, your, your urban forester, okay? And then there's another tree in the back. Uh, originally, we, we would like to remove it, okay, which is tree number eleven, which is a fern pine. Uh, but after discussion with CD and, um, uh, Sammy, okay, we also changed the full plan of the garage and, and keep it. Um, for number twelve, the, the tree, the number twelve, which is, okay, really on the next-door property, is not on this property. Uh, but the neighbor, um, the neighbor is willing to help, uh, the subject property owner, because they are relatives. So they're willing to allow them to, uh, allow us to remove tree number twelve, the Caroline cherry. Uh, so we are proposing to remove these two trees. And number nine is a, um, mature tree, okay? And this, uh, according to the city's, uh, tree removal checklist on page number three, uh, removing a tree between nineteen inches and thirty-six inches, we have to replace it with, uh, there are two options. One is to replace with eight-twenty-four-inch tree, I'm sorry, eight-twenty-four-inch box tree or four-thirty-six, uh, inch box tree. So, um, we will work with the CT and provide those trees, okay? Um, for the tree number twelve, Caroline cherry, okay, that is a heritage tree. Um, on your tree removal checklist, okay, there's, it's not specified how many trees to replace. It only says, okay, product heritage trees or oak tree must be replaced with heritage tree, okay? Um, so, uh, this one I need to find out with, um, Sammy, okay, for the exact number of tree to be replaced. And so for the proposed house, the size, okay, we feel that this is a, a smaller house compared to the houses left and right. So, uh, massing-wise, it should fit in very well. And, um, with, then the city has, okay, five conditions of approval, okay? Which, okay, I, I like to address here. The first is the recess porch entrance. Uh, on our plan, we proposed a six-inch recess. Um, staff suggests, okay, a eighteen-inch recess, which we totally feel fine, okay? Because that adds to details, shelter and, and shadows to the house, which will make this how the front erosion looks more interesting. The second thing, the second item is the stucco finish, change from Santa Barbara to, okay, San, uh, San finish, which we, we feel that that's very appropriate, too. Um, the third one is the lighting, uh, limit to twelve inches tall. Uh, we, we feel that there's no problem, okay? We have no problem with that, because this is a small house, twelve inches will serve the purpose. Um, there, then the last two are, um, the plate height. Um, this house will be slapped on gray, okay? So for building call, we are six, we are only eighteen inches, no, I'm sorry, we are eight inches from the finished gray around the house. And with the nine-foot plate height, okay, it will give, um, the plate height at nine foot, eight inches above the finished gray around the house. And, um, the, the west three of existing house, which is a much bigger house, three thousand plus square foot house, uh, he, and it is on a raised four foundation. Uh, the, the raised four framing is at one and a half foot above the adjacent grade. And the plate height of that house, okay, uh, is at nine feet. So that house is, the, the plate height is at ten feet, uh, thirty, ten point three four feet. I have some, uh, survey renovations here. And which is like six inches, okay, higher than the proposed house. And on the west side, the existing house is a two-story house, um, is up to the maximum height of city allowed. Um, so we, we really like to ask the commissioners to allow us to keep the nine-foot ceiling for this house. It, as a matter of fact, there's a new house under construction across the street, which is six-one-six windrow. They have a nine-foot plate height. And, and most of the houses, um, well, okay, in, in, in our situation, we feel that, okay, between these two houses, uh, we really feel that, okay, nine-foot ceiling is not excessive. Um, the, the last, okay, item, uh, staff suggest, okay, to reduce the storage area behind the garage so that, uh, we can keep the two camellia, the, the two small trees, those are flowering trees, like, uh, they are camellia. And we feel that, okay, for that setback, uh, we are back-to-back to the neighbor's detached garage. The neighbor only has one foot, four inches to the property line, and we are proposing two and a half foot setback to the property line. Um, those trees really, they're, they're, they don't serve a buffer, um, a purpose, because these two garage are so close to each other. And, um, and the neighbor's garage is a gable roof, it is the gable roof that facing our, our property. So we feel that those trees, um, a kind of a, a minor commentary, if we can keep the storage area, that would, okay, help a lot, because existing, uh, because the proposed house is very small, thirteen-hundred square feet. We, we really need some space for storage of something. Um, then, um, I, and, uh, let me see, and, uh, and we, we are, we are, we are okay with the conditions or the, um, other staff, okay, propose, okay, items. Um, I'm more than happy to, okay, answer any question you may have.
I have a question.
Please, ma'am.
Thank you. I hate to repeat myself, so I apologize, but I am, I, I'm still confused about the trees, because in the report, it said the trees, the reducing the storage area in the garage was too, because the trees, uh, covered the utility line. And you're saying that they're, what, very small kind of bushes, type trees that actually don't rise to the height? Again, no, no story polls, no ability to really go to the back and, and see these trees. So you have to help me. Do they, do they mask the utility lines or not?
Oh, there is utility line in the back, running along the back, so, uh, but these, um, camellia, they are not tall. But then, okay, um, if we need, if we really need to reduce the garage size to accommodate these trees, these trees will become a maintenance issue. And, and these, um, and, and between these two garages, there's only a very narrow space. So, uh, we really feel that, okay, um, they, they don't serve the purpose for buffering, okay? Uh, so that's why.
Heard you, I got sure you answered my question, which I think is answering my question, so.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you.
Um, sorry, Commissioner Wright, are you done?
Yes, sorry.
I, I mean, I also want to talk about the trees, because if I understand correctly from what I read in the report, there have been identified twelve established trees.
Yes.
Plan is to keep four oak trees, one of which is still, one of the oak trees is still potentially at risk because of how close it is to the front of the new house, correct?
Yes.
And then the other eight trees, fully established trees, you are planning on removing because of potentially like maintenance issues? And they're not really.
No.
But, so I guess my first question is, of the twelve trees, you are removing eight, you are requesting to remove eight established trees.
No, only two, only two, only number, um, nine and twelve.
According to, according to the Arborist report, it is very clearly stated that you intend to remove five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. And you're only keeping one through four, which are the established oaks.
Oh, there was a, uh, the report was prepared in two thousand and nineteen. Um, I, for the, uh, last week, okay, as staff suggested me, okay, to do an update report. But then, okay, uh, Arborist was busy, okay, up to state, uh, for other projects. So, um, but, uh, if you look at the plan again, okay, um, there's only tree number nine, okay, along the west property line, right in, right along the two-bedroom side yard will be removed, which is indicated as the dashed circle. Um, remove tree number nine, uh, there a description, they'll say remove tree number nine. And there is another tree, okay, uh, next to the, um, east, northeast corner, which is on the neighbor's property, which is a Carolina cherry, will be removed. So, uh, on this plan submitted, we only remove two established trees.
They've amended the plan, in other words.
My trip, well, there, there's a discrepancy, you're right, between the Arborist report and the plans as presented. The, the problem, and it took me a while to figure this out, but basically, the Arborist report is just a leftover report from a previous project that they submitted in two thousand and nineteen. It's, so it doesn't coincide. They've, they've decided not to remove all the trees listed in the Arborist report.
Okay, because even on the plans, they ha, I mean, on page A1, they have trees that, I mean, they do not show the existing trees that they are, like, they actually have removed tree.
Yeah, I saw that, too, I also have.
I mean, they have places where they say that they're going to remove trees, that they're now saying that on their Arborist report, it's inaccurate, but on A1, they are there listed as being removed. So I just.
Well, we, I, let's, let's, um, let's address that discrepancy in our deliberations.
Okay.
Do you have any additional questions for the applicant? Do, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
No.
I, um, have a few. Your roof plan indicates a six-twelve roof pitch, while the indic, while the elevation drawings indicate a three and a half to twelve pitch. I'm assuming the three and a half is the correct one?
Yes, okay, that, that is discrepancy, okay, I found that, okay, before the meeting, okay, I'm sorry for that.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, my next question, the elevation drawings, uh, of the garage, they don't show any detail on the vehicle door panels, uh, for the garage. Um, is that exactly how they're going to be, that they're just a single panel of?
Uh, the, those are raised, and the solid wood garage door.
Yes, but the panel itself has no detail or features on it, it's just a flat panel?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, there's two sections, on the top, there's this windows.
Window, I'm talking about the square panel below the windows, so, okay. Um, my next question is, um, you know, on your elevation details, it indicates that the fascia boards, uh, where the, the hip eaves are, it says that the fascia boards are two-by, and it doesn't say anything, so what is the width of the fascia board?
There should be two by four.
Two by four.
I'm sorry, this should be two by four.
Thank you. Um, and then, um, another question, your plans don't specify the type of exterior light fixtures on the north elevation. I'm assuming that they're the same fixtures that you're specifying for the south elevation and for the garage, is that, okay? And then, uh, well, I also had questions about the Arborist report and the trees listed on the deep site plan, but I, I think I, I understand your response, so, but I, I think we'll have to talk about that a little bit amongst us. Um, okay, so that's all I have, um, last question, time, last, last call for questions for the applicant from the commissioner. Okay, uh, then I will, um, ask, uh, I'll open the, uh, public hearing portion of this, um, and we'll ask if there are any members of the public, uh, who would like to speak for, against, or about this project, if you could indicate so at this time.
Sure, I don't see any hands raised, I don't see any hands raised on the screen or the video, nor on the, on this participants' page, I don't see hands raised at this point.
Okay, uh, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll move to, uh, deliberations, um, amongst ourselves, Commissioner Wright.
Okay, um, I think this is a much better project, so thank you for that. It's a modest lot and a modest house, and I, I like that. So, um, so my general feeling about it, the one-story, again, the modest part, I could support and support the staff's, um, findings in that regard. Uh, as to the proposed conditions that staff is recommending, um, I certainly have no problems agreeing with, agreeing with the applicant as to the recessed alcove, the different stucco color, the lighting, so that gets me down to the plate height and the, uh, trees. Um, I don't know that we have, uh, approved a lot of houses with, with taller plate heights. So generally speaking, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but that's something I'd be certainly happy to listen to other, um, commissioners about. And the trees, my head's a spinning, so I think I need to talk a little bit more about that. And the question of whether we feel comfortable, uh, dealing with the trees by a condition and whether we want to leave that to staff to work with them under, with, with our parameters. Um, because I'm, as we know, certainly in favor of, of keeping the, the trees. They're down to removing only two, I appreciate that. Uh, one of them isn't even on their site, so that's a little bit tricky. Um, and as far as, um, the tree, uh, that requires them to reduce their storage area, I'm, I'm waffling, because I, it is a small house, I, I understand their, uh, their concern. Um, and I wish I had a better feeling about the privacy aspect of it. So I'm sorry, that's as good as I got, which is I'm wanting to listen a little bit as to those two things, plate height and, um, the trees, this to the commissioners.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Brody.
Yeah, um, I, I kind of share the, uh, the opinion of Commissioner Wright and that this is a, a modest and a minimalist design and, um, will not be problematic in and of itself. Uh, I'm not concerned about the plate height, uh, that aspect doesn't concern me, but, and I think the remaining conditions, uh, that have been put forth should be adopted. Uh, I also believe that the Arborist report needs to be amended, uh, to reflect what's on the plans, because there is a differential there, I don't want to stand and have both submitted at the same time. So that's kind of my gut feel at this point. Um, not enthusiastic about this project, but I could support it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chang.
Yes, um, yeah, I, I agree with, for the most part, most of the comments that are made by the other commissioners. Um, I also don't take much, uh, issue with the plate height. Uh, and I would also just propose that conditional approval is that the Arborist report reflects correctly to the actual trees that are being removed and as indicated per the, the design documents. actual trees that are being moved, and as indicated per the, the design documents. Otherwise, I'd be able to support the project.
Vice Chair Boyle.
I don't think I'm in agreement with all of my fellow commissioners from the standpoint that I cannot support this project as is. Even with the conditions, I think that there's too much, there's just too much left to the imagination, I don't know if it's possible to continue this and ask for story polls to be put up and have access to the vacant lot, I think that we're being made, we're being asked to make a decision on, you know, the, the compatibility of this house in the neighborhood based on drawings alone. And some of the, the drawings seem to be inaccurate as it pertains to the Arborist report and what the landscape, you know, I mean, there's just too many contradictions that I just, I don't feel comfortable as it stands right now. I find it very interesting, I mean, this is just my personal thing, like, to justify not adjusting the plate height by bringing up 616 Winthrop. I mean, in my personal opinion, 616 Winthrop could probably go on a list of one of the ugliest houses in San Marino, and so if they're going to use that as a comparison of a good plate height, like, that tells me, no, we need to, you know, definitely follow staff's recommendation at the very least. So, you know, I just, I need a lot more information about, I need accuracy with regards to the trees, I really wish that we could walk around the property and really get a sense of privacy needs, and and so that's kind of where I'm standing on this, you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Okazaki.
You know, I think the owner was sort of disadvantaged in trying to develop a project on the site. In, in that this, this parcel is like somebody's backyard with all the trees were planted next to the house, and so it's very difficult, and, you know, originally, a two-story was proposed. The owner came back and really, really significantly reduced the size of the project, and reduced the number of trees that would have to be reduced. So I, I, I support what the architect and the owner has done to reduce his house to only 1,300 and some odd square feet of housing. Significantly reduced the height by providing a one-story house. I, I, I support the architect and the owner wanting the nine-foot ceiling, I think that's totally consistent with the buildings on the north side, given that there's a huge two-story to the left of the, on the west side of the house, and the story on the, one story on the, on the right side, the ranch style house has a real high stature, as I looked at it, and and I also agree that because the house is so small, the getting the extra storage area behind the garage, which is not standard, but I think that's, that's really a sort of a compensation for not being able to build a two-story there, and, and still, you know, having some sort of a storage for the house, that's so small in this neighborhood, and I, I, I personally don't need the, the story polls to tell me what it's going to look like, the plans are very clear, and I could easily imagine what it would look like, I don't need to walk around there. And, and the tree, as I understand it, behind the garage is, is just a camellia. It's not a tree, it's just a tall camellia, and I, I agree with the owner and the architect that, I think it is not going to be a major, a buffer to protect or the view behind, behind the garage to cover the utility pole or anything like that, so I think it's okay. So I personally would like to see this project approved with all the conditions, given that the owner is saying that the one through three, as staff recommended, is something that they could support. So I support the owner's request for the exemption for four and five conditions that the staff had asked, that the owner get what they want. I think that's the least we could do to support this project, having given them such a hard time the last several years. So I ask for your support to approve this project.
All right. Well, I'm gonna make some comments, unfortunately, I'm gonna be a little wordy here. I, I am I am in concurrence with Vice Chair Boyle, I, I could not approve this project as it stands. There's been a lot of talk about size. I think size does impact this project, but not so much for me as some other problems that I have. When you look at the traditional housing stock in San Marino, it, it is very traditional architecture. It is elegant in that it is attractive and simple, it is not busy. It doesn't try, it doesn't force itself. And when you walk down that street, and you look at the houses that were built recently, they stand out very clearly. Yes, they stand out partly because they're oversized, and I think Vice Chair Boyle has a very good point, you need to be very careful when you pick out homes as an example of why you should be able to do what you're asking to do, because that example may be something that is abhorrent to the commission. 616, I was on the body that reviewed that, I, I'd have to go back, but my memory tells me that I did not approve that. It is, it is an abysmal looking house. The two houses on the west side of this proposed project lot are not in keeping with that neighborhood. Partly because they're big, and this house doesn't suffer that fault, it's not big. But it does suffer one fault that they also have, and that is, they are not elegant, simple, traditional design. They are, it is, this, this project is very forced. There are just so many elements that don't, they're not something that you would find in a house built in the period that most of the homes on that street were built. So my examples would be, as staff pointed out, the smooth stucco finish is just not something you would find in that time period. The roof plan is just ridiculously busy. There's all these valleys and peaks and crevices, and the fact that this house has a largely hipped roof, but then they throw in gabled ends at sort of random, it looks like the house has just sort of been, you know, chopped off in places to make it fit in the space. That, that doesn't work. The, the gable vent is a non-functional architectural detail, that's only there because there's a gable. The gable is just there to be there. You know, I, I just have a problem with throwing in architectural details to make the facade look interesting. Facades look interesting enough when they're just well-designed. I don't think you need to put in fake elements. The stainless steel chimney vent is very industrial looking, it doesn't fit with the house. I'm gonna get a little bit specific here, the window trim is out of proportion. You've got one and a half inch thick sills with apron boards that are four inches wide and a half, inch and a half thick. It makes the trim on the windows look very top-heavy. You'd be better off narrowing the, the apron boards and making the window sills a little bit thicker. As to the plate heights, I, I agree with staff. There is the, the nine-foot plate height, I think, does not look appropriate on this house and a house of this size. There's another good reason for wanting to limit the plate heights on this project, or any project that goes in on this lot, and that is because of tree number four. If you look at the Arborist report, again, it flags that tree as being the most at risk. Partly because so much of the root mass is going to need to be trimmed, and the tree canopy is going to need to be trimmed. If you bring the plate height down, you will need to trim the canopy less in order to accommodate this house. There are a couple of superfluous light fixtures on the rear of this house that are just sort of stuck on a wall, there's no entry or exit door there. It, that's, if you need light in that area of the yard, you should put landscape lighting in, don't just stick a light on the wall, and now your neighbor has to look at that light all through the night. I, I'm really concerned about oak tree number four. You know, you read that Arborist report, and, you know, it's like, well, you can, you can trim up to 30% of the root mass, 10% of the live crown. Who is going to be there on-site monitoring all that? I can't imagine, you know, a construction worker excavating for the walkway and for the slab of that house, knowing when they're digging through the dirt and going through roots, when they hit 30%. I just, I, I'm really concerned about that tree. I also have concerns that Chair, Vice Chair Boyle pointed out, there's not just discrepancies between the Arborist report and the project plans, there are discrepancies between the site plan in the project plans and the planting plan in the site plans. They, they label and indicate different things are happening to diff, to, to the same trees. In one site, they say they're coming out, and the other site, they're saying they're, they're, they're staying. I, I just, there's just way too much here that, for me, that I could not condition all of this. I, I would need to see this come back, so do I, do I have anybody willing to make a motion?
All quiet on the western front. I tell you, my gut feel was that I could approve it, but I was not that far away from declining to approve it. And for a lot of the reasons, most of them deal with design factors, the minimal design just, just barely went over the line for me. The question I have for the commission is, is this something that we can handle by way of a a continuance, or does it have to be a denial?
Well, I mean, I think the only way we can really figure that out is to make the motion, and see if it gets seconded and, and, you know, go from there, I mean, I, I was about to make the motion to deny DRC 19-44 HP.
But if we were going to continue it, the question is definitely, have we given enough information? Certainly Chair Dustin has given a lot of good information related to design elements. I, for one, would support a lower plate height, so that may be a majority supporting the lower plate height. But, because I would be okay with the continuance as long as we think we've given enough guidance.
I, I mean, I listened to some of your comments. I think those of you who, who were okay with the storage area behind the garage, you swayed me, I think, you know, given the modest size of this home, that, that is a reasonable feature that, that the, that the applicant would want somewhere on the property, and so I think that, that, I don't really have too much of a problem with that. I, I like staff suggestions about the entryway, I mean, I, again, you know, just these flat, shallow entries are not something that you would see on a house that was built in the city back in the 30s. So, I, I don't know, I, I think we, there is optimism here for a continuance, but, but there would need to be substantial work.
I just wanted to say one thing, just because I was holding my tongue with regards to the storage aspect, and, but because Chair Dustin just brought it up. You know, I just want to say, when you have a master bedroom that is almost equal in size in the living room, as the living room, I think you could probably find room for storage by minimizing some of the space within the, like, main house that would mitigate a lot of the, like, tree removals for having the storage space on the garage. And so I, and I'm just saying that from the standpoint of, like, that storage space may not be absolutely necessary if you look at the, you know, square footage of each room. And granted, you know, if this person is building it for somebody who wants a really large room, then that's fine, but I'm just saying, like, you know, they're oh, I'm sorry, my fever is getting to me now, and I don't know what I'm saying anymore.
I respectfully disagree, I've seen a, I've seen a lot, a lot, a lot of houses on, what, 5,000 square foot lots, it was the the very common lot size for the city of Los Angeles, and very few of them were this small. So I think it truly is a modest house for a modest lot, and they could, they could use the storage space. That was just my viewpoint, obviously skewed because of my own personal history. I will make a motion, maybe seconded, maybe not, to continue design review number DRC 19-44 to the next meeting, will they be able to do it by then, like, we may need to ask.
Maybe, maybe Jerry, we, we might want to ask the applicant if they are okay with the continuance, or, you know, where they could come back at the next meeting, and, and they're okay with absorbing some of the things that they heard tonight, and are willing to make changes. Because, you know, as long as I've done this, I've seen people say, oh, okay, you'll vote on it, and they come back with the same thing. That they have to understand that if they come back with the same concept, not making substantial changes, they're likely to get denied. So, could we present that to the applicant and ask him what his position is?
Thank you, all the commissioners, okay, suggestions and comments. We're willing to come back, okay, for a continuance. Yeah, we're open for, okay, your suggestions, okay, we'll go back and we visit the project and take a look at them. The project that presented to you tonight, okay, was in a, a joint effort with staff, okay, then, like, the, the roof configuration, okay, cutting the floor plan, okay? From
The question, the question is for continuance.
Yeah, sure, I'm, I just wanted answer the question from the commissioner that we're willing
It's not a Q and A at this point, it's, it's a matter of whether you accept a continuance or not.
And if you can, for the next meeting, or if you need more time than that.
It's a next meeting a month from today, or?
Four or five weeks, I'm not sure. Four weeks?
Here, if I may, um, I have a comment about the next continuance, the next date. The March agenda is, is filling up, so staff would respectfully recommend that the committee continue the project to the April. To the April 21st meeting date, that will allow the applicants to install the story pole and to redesign the roof of the, of the new design, tidy up the issue with the Arborist and the landscape plans. So I think April will be a good time to clean up all the inconsistency in the Arborist report.
All right, I will, my motion to continue design review number DRC 19-44 HP to the April 21st meeting.
Can I, can I ask a clarification? So, am I to understand we're, we're requesting the applicant to install story poles, staff, is that something we can do?
Well, I'm not expecting that.
It is not the commission's discretion, and based on the comment that I heard during the deliberation period, a majority of the commissioner felt that story pole will help you understand the location and the placement of the building in relationship to the existing canopy and trees on the property, and additionally, we will arrange for access for the commissioner to visit the site.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, could we have roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, we'll move on then to agenda item number one. Where is that? Oh, here we go, workshop on the housing and safety elements. Workshop on the Housing and Safety Elements Update. Staff, would you like to sort of kick this off?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair, we'll give you a brief introduction. This agenda item provides the planning commission the opportunity to discuss um and initiate discussion on the San Marino Housing and Safety Element Update, which is currently on, um, we have been undertaken for the last three, four months. The item also allows public inputs on the housing needs and potential viable solution in the city. Um, we, the city has um provided a community survey, it's been posted on the city's website. This um survey is provided in Spanish and Chinese in addition to um English. So we are really looking to the community for their input and their idea is to us to what are the needs and what viable solution we can come up with. This housing element uh update takes place every eight years. The last um element was certified by the state back in two thousand thirteen, so eight years later, we're here. Um, but the issue is the legis- um, the regulatory landscape has is vastly different. In the last three, four years, the um state's been very busy adopting different legislations, promoting um production of housing units. And these um desire to increase housing unit production is coming down to a local level. It's difficult for city staff to keep track of all of the legislation and to make sure that we are in compliance with state's requirement. And for that reason, we have obtained the surface of um Jane Riley and her company Four Leaf to um take us through this process. And Jane um is here with us tonight and she will be going over um the housing legislation that we need to be aware of in preparing our update and how, what we can consider ideally in order to meet the housing element requirement and present a viable um draft to the state and perhaps get it certified. So with that, I will hand that up to um our um the principal planner, Jane Riley.
Great, thank you, you have a great introduction. I think that's a good summary of exactly where we are and what we need to do. Let me share my screen here quickly and get us started. There we go. So as Eva indicated, I'm Jane Riley, I'm with Four Leaf and I am here helping the city prepare its six-cycle housing element. I've been working on housing element since the second cycle. And this six cycle is very different from anything I've ever seen before. And tonight we'll cover that a little bit when we talk about the new housing laws that Eva mentioned. We'll talk about the inventory requirements and then look briefly at some of the select demographics and preliminary community survey results. I could then pause and take questions or clarifications from the commission before we go on into the policy options. Let me know then. So there are volumes and volumes of requirements for housing elements. I'm going to cover this part, this housing one oh one very briefly, because that was just a town hall a couple of months ago that covered that. Aldo did that town hall, and so if you participated, these slides are going to look familiar because I borrowed them back from him. Um, I wanted to emphasize in this first bullet, just the the overarching premise is that it's the city's statutory obligation to adequately plan for existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. So we're going to plan and project out through twenty twenty-nine. The regional housing need allocation or RENA has increased astronomically all over California, but especially here in the SCAG region. Cities must plan for and zone for their renas, but they're not obligated to build it. The legislature's intent is that cities have always have enough land zoned at high enough densities so that it's feasible for a developer to come in and to build the housing. Most cities are not in the business of building housing and they depend on private developers in the market to do that. San Marino's RENA is three hundred and ninety-seven units and that includes two hundred and forty units affordable to lower income households. This is what the process looks like. SCAG has provided your RENA. And so we're now down here in the gray box, working on a housing element that's going to accommodate that RENA state requirements and meet the community's needs. We'll work closely with HCD to produce an element that can be certified because certification is important. It provides the presumption of legal validity and a legal challenge. It keeps the attorney general off your back and it allows you to retain local control over housing projects. And we'll talk about that a little more. So we need to talk about how density plays into the housing element update. Density is not a word that most folks in San Marino want to hear. The statute says that you must zone enough sites at, I quote, appropriate densities to meet your RENA. For the two hundred and forty lower income households that you have the RENA for, that means a density of twenty units per acre. If San Marino had some development experience with affordable housing so that you were able to demonstrate that you can get to that level of affordability with a lower density, then you would be able to make that argument that you can use a lower density and get there. But you don't have that experience, you've never developed any affordable housing. And so you are stuck with the state default density, which is twenty units per acre for a community of your size. So let's look at what happened since the last housing element that's going to make it so difficult this time. And Eva referred to this a little bit. This is a an incomplete table of the recent laws affecting housing and housing elements. There's a more complete table that I provided as an attachment to your staff report. And that actually includes links to all of the actual legislation. If you want to go and look at that, um, enjoy the brain damage. I'm a total housing policy wonk, so I like that kind of stuff. And I understand we have some attorneys here, so you might like it too. As to the new laws, AB seventy-two is a big one and it's going to be really important in San Marino. This, this law gives the HCD, the State Department of Housing Community Development really broad authority that they've never had before. They can revoke compliance and certification of your housing element at any time that they find you're not doing what you're supposed to do. And this is also important, they can refer any case to the attorney general for noncompliance with any of the five things listed on this slide. Housing Element Law, Housing Accountability Act, the No Net Loss Law, which we'll talk about in a minute, Density Bonus Law and Anti-Discrimination Laws. So really broad authority. SB thirty-five. Excuse me, I think your commission is somewhat familiar with SB thirty-five. It basically says that housing projects with an affordable component excuse me, are allowed ministerially. No discretion is allowed on the part of the local official period. They can only look at adopted objective design standards that were in place when the application came in. So when Aldo comes to you and tells you that you need to adopt these objective design standards, please believe him, please listen to him and please work really hard to get those adopted before additional projects come in that um under SB thirty-five. Right now, San Marino's subject to SB thirty-five only for projects that provide at least fifty percent of their units as affordable because you did meet your RENA total number from last time, but you didn't meet the affordability levels that you had last time. Um, starting next year, you will be subject for projects that provide only ten percent of their units affordable. AB thirteen ninety-seven made some changes to the housing sites requirement. You know, I have to say that the sites inventory requirements were already going to be problematic for San Marino before AB thirteen ninety-seven. Just because this is a community that's completely built out and you have, what, two vacant lots? And your RENA far exceeds what you can build on those two or three vacant lots that you have in city limits. So AB thirteen ninety-seven added even more requirements for housing element site inventories, including the need for a strong justification to HCD if you use non-vacant sites in your inventory. We're going to have to make those justifications to HCD for every non-vacant site that we're using. And that can take the form of a letter from the property owner saying they do intend to redevelop the site within the housing element period, a letter from a potential developer saying they're interested in developing the site, something like that. Got to justify it. This table lays out some of those specific changes that thirteen ninety-seven made. It includes the need for sites to be located within a community in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing. We get down into the nuts and bolts of that. It means that we have to provide housing, affordable housing opportunities or high-density housing opportunities in areas which have um the highest opportunities. And there's a whole range of opportunities and the San Marino's entire city limits is in a highest opportunity area. SB one sixty-six, that's the No Net Loss Law that I mentioned earlier. This is also going to be really important for San Marino. This basically says that the city has to replace any site that you listed in your housing inventory if it develops as something else or if it develops in a different way than you listed it in your inventory. If you said you were going to develop twenty units of affordable housing and you developed ten units of market rate housing instead, the requirement is for you to go back and replace that site within six months. And I think we all know how difficult it would be to try and identify sites, go through the public process and rezone them within six months. So I really recommend that you try not to get into this champ. You'll recall from my earlier slide that noncompliance with this No Net Loss Law is one of the reasons that HCD can refer you to the attorney general. And this is the last one, I'm going to cover AB six eighty-six, affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH. In addition to collecting and analyzing the socioeconomic data, we need to analyze any exclusionary land use practices and include programs to eliminate them. The definition of what it means to affirmably further fair housing is taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access. That's a mouthful and HCD is still working on their guidance. But basically, we have to explore exclusionary land use practices and come up with programs in the housing element to eliminate them. Presumption of legal adequacy is, if you are litigated, is probably the biggest benefit of HCD certification of your housing element that avoids the attorney, a general litigation on housing elements. You maintain discretionary review over housing projects, except for that SB thirty-five part. And you also maintain eligibility for state housing and community development funds. And that's not just housing funds, it's also funds for things like parks and sidewalks. So I know someone's going to ask the question, so I'm going to go ahead and ask it and answer it. What happens if a jurisdiction doesn't adopt the housing element? You say it's impossible, we're just not going to do it. Well, if the city doesn't comply with state law, it can be sued and it probably would be. In addition to facing significant fines, a court can limit local land use decision-making and authority until the jurisdiction brings the housing element into compliance. So I want you to understand that if that land use authority is taken away from you by a court, you're going to lose the right to deny housing projects, even if they're inconsistent with your general plan and zoning. So keep that in mind as we move through the update process. This is a really, really big stick. So I'm going to quickly go through some of the demographics. I didn't put a lot in here, they're all attached um to your staff report. As one of the attachments is a whole thick packet from SCAG. Population trends, this is pretty simple. San Marino in the blue bars and there's a line that SCAG um over this growth period, San Marino had, or over this this ten-year period, San Marino had annual growth rate of just zero point one percent as opposed to point seven percent for the region. This one I'm going to spend a little time on because this, this really tells the story of of San Marino and what the housing needs are. This is what your population looks like and what it's going to look like in the eight-year housing element period that we're planning for. So these bars are five-year cohorts, every bar is five years. So this one, for example, is ages sixty to sixty-four. These um years are already a few years behind. And so when you go eight years into the future, you need to imagine each of these boxes moving two spaces farther to the right. So this, this kind of aging or middle-aged population is going to move over here closer to the aging population. And this young population is going to move over here to, or the the kid population is going to move over here to the young adult population. So anybody want to guess why there's a hole here? There's a hole here because San Marino doesn't have housing that's affordable to people who are just starting out. So that's why you see the hole here. So we see two needs, two housing element needs here. One is for people who are aging and one is for people who are going to be looking to settle down and start their own families. And if we don't provide for them in San Marino, then they're going to be going somewhere else. Uh, this slide looks at elderly households and that's defined as um two people or more age sixty-two or older and the HUD's area median family income. Almost twenty-three percent of San Marino's elderly households, these together, are in the very low income mark, which is less than fifty percent, less than half of the area median income. Another twelve percent are considered low income and another twelve percent are considered moderate income. So San Marino is a very affluent community, but you do need to realize that twenty-five year percent of your elderly are very low income. And for the most part, they own their own homes. So we have very low income people whose big asset is their homes, which they're living in. But remember, they're also aging, so they're going to have some specific housing needs that we'll need to address. This is no surprise, uh, San Marino is blue, LA County is orange. These are types of housing. San Marino has single-family detached housing period. And um LA County has some other types of housing, including multifamily, but they still have twice as much single family. It is the predominant housing style. And you can, you can see that just in the history of LA County and the way it's developed and spread out. This chart shows household sizes for San Marino residents. The state law requires us to address the special needs of both very small and very large households. And so that's what we look for here. Renters are shown in the brown color and homeowners are shown in the green color. And as you can see here, for San Marino's two-person households, most of them are homeowners. For the four-person households, most of them are renters, which is interesting. There is a significant proportion of San Marino's population that's a one-person household, but you're less than significant over here on the six or larger, the large-person households. So this data tells us that we can help and meet the housing need with small units that are suitable for one-person households, but that we don't have the need for the very large households, at least not yet in San Marino. So I'm going to go over just the the preliminary results from the community survey. Again, this is preliminary, it can change, and this is the English language uh results only. This first slide asked, the question asked people what the biggest housing need was facing San Marino today and you could choose as many answers as you wanted. So number one and number two here are, we need housing choices in the lower price range. Number two is, we need homes that are affordable to first-time home buyers. So we saw that in the demographic slide, right? We saw that hole in the population. This yellow bar is all of San Marino's housing needs are being met. So we do have a certain proportion of the community that really doesn't want San Marino to have to change at all. I get it, um, the state wants something else for you. This bar was for, we need lower-cost rental housing. And this bar was for San Marino needs housing for people who work here. This next question asked people about their housing needs in the coming ten years to imagine what San Marino's housing needs would be in the coming ten years. Number one answer, older homes will be deteriorating and in need of repair. Next was housing. Next was housing will need to be priced to attract new families to San Marino, then housing will need to be priced so my children can afford to live here. We're seeing the same thing. Our aging population will need accessible, well-designed housing options, and businesses will need housing affordable to their workers. This one's a little harder to read. I ordered it so that green is agree, red is disagree, and blue is neutral. And you can't really see these, you did get the full results in your packet, but this first bar asked people to agree or disagree or neutral on a bunch of statements. This first bar was, it's important to preserve San Marino's neighborhoods. Most of the people agreed with that, like eighty-one percent of people agree with that. The next one is, it's important to preserve San Marino's historic architecture. Again, a great deal of agreement. The third was, some of the older homes need maintenance, we've seen that before. Then fourth, there are no entry-level homes in San Marino, then my children can't afford to live here, then some seniors need assistance to remain in their homes, and then people who work in San Marino can't afford to live here, and so on. Again, when we get over here with rental prices are too high and San Marino needs more housing options, we got a lot more disagreement. When we get to the end with San Marino should allow some apartments, we got a lot of disagreement. No one wants apartments, or very few, I shouldn't say no one, there is a segment of the population that said, yes, we need to allow apartments in San Marino. This one asked community members what kinds of new housing types they felt might be successful in San Marino today, and they ranked them on one to five. Not surprisingly, accessory dwelling units ran the, really won the day, but followed really closely by smaller, single-family dwellings like cottages. So that's an interesting one. Independent senior living, alternative housing types didn't score very well, and group homes and dormitory housing kind of bombed. No one really thought that was a great idea for San Marino. And this is just a word cloud of some of the terms that people were using in the open-ended question. Again, you have that in your packet, and you can read exactly verbatim what people were saying. We're not identifying individuals, but we do want you to see some of the really great and inventive ideas that are out there, and I've got to say, I was really impressed. I expected to have a pretty monotonous kind of survey result, and that's not what we found. We found that San Marino residents are really thinking about this, and they're understanding that there are some needs, and they're coming up with some interesting solutions to meet those needs. So I can stop here and take questions, or we can just plow through the policy options.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a few.
Chair Dustin?
Yeah, you mentioned the word unit at least three or four times. You said we're short three hundred and ninety-seven units, and there are twenty units to an acre. What's a unit defined as?
A housing unit.
Well, that, that's meaningless. What specifically, in terms of square footage, bedrooms, baths, is a unit defined as?
Sure. The census definition of a unit is a minimum of two hundred and seventy-five square feet for one or two people and an additional seventy-five square feet per person for more than that. It doesn't have to have a bedroom. It has to have facilities for cooking, as storing and preparing food, it has to have a storage closet, and it has to have a separate bathroom. That's what makes the unit.
Okay, and we're talking about twenty units per acre, and we're, we need three hundred and ninety-seven units. That means we need twenty more acres in San Marino. How are we going to get a city expander? You know, there are things to expand your shoes, but how do you get a city to expand twenty extra acres?
That would be great, wouldn't it?
Yes.
We will be talking, we can talk about annexation, it's something that we need to talk about in the housing element anyway, as a constraint or non-constraint to development. The issue I see, of course, is that if we expand outside into county property, we have more of the same, right? The land use pattern is still largely single-family. There, there are a few limited options out there, but annexation's also expensive, so we'd have to do the cost analysis and see if that's something that you want to explore.
And is there any out, given the fact that we don't have twenty extra vacant acres to satisfy this particular mandate? Is there any exclusion in the law?
There is not.
So to cut to the chase, what this tells me is, the folks we send up to Sacramento are bound and determined to destroy the R-one zone. Is that your read?
Let's talk about that when we get to policy options. I, I think, you know, just, just being flat-out honest here, I do sit on the Legislative Review Committee for California APA, and there is a segment of the legislature who would like to ban R-one zoning. I don't think it's going to happen. I think too many Californians grew up with R-one zoning, it's a way of life, and I don't think that'll happen, but there is certainly a push in that direction, yes.
Appreciate your honesty, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, unless somebody else did.
Go ahead.
Okay. Can I call you Jane?
Absolutely, please do.
And Jane, my first question is, if you could define affordable for me, and I'm, and I'm particularly wondering, is affordable in relation to ours, or is it in relation to LA County or the state of California? What is the definition of affordable?
It's the LA County definition, it's attachment one on your staff report. And basically, it's affordable, affordable means, and this is kind of the global, I'm not going to attach numbers to it because I don't have that attachment in front of me, but it means that a family of a particular household size pays no more than thirty percent of their gross income or their housing. And then that's broken down into the different income segments depending on where that income kind of cohort is in relationship to the area median income. It is not San Marino's median income, it's LA County's median income.
And then my next question, which may be something that we discuss later, as when you mentioned, talking legislative aspects of this, what, what is this supposed to fix? And I mean that, like, is this to fix the housing crisis? Is this to fix, like, what, what, what is this really supposed to fix? And I know that that's a really general question, but...
It is a really general question, but it's also one that I'm asked a lot, and I think it's perfectly legitimate. I think a local jurisdiction with this impossible number to meet is, you know, looking at the state saying, what are you trying to prove here? You've given us something impossible, now we can't get certified, so we can't get any funds for housing. So even if we wanted to build a bunch of affordable housing, you're making it impossible. I think there are some unintended consequences there, and there's lots of stuff brewing to change the whole Reno process. In the meantime, we got something that we're stuck with until the next housing element cycle. So HCD, the state, hands these numbers to the regional COGS, like Association of Bay Area Governments, or Southern California Association of Governments, or a group of counties, and they come up with the methodology to distribute those numbers. So the number, I think last, the last cycle, Los Angeles County got a number of like five hundred thousand and change to divide up among all its communities. This time, it was like one point two million. And the state's attitude was, you guys haven't been building housing for the last twenty years. You quit building housing. Not you guys, not San Marino. San Marino was already built out by that time, right? But the state in general has not been building housing, so we have this huge gap where housing hasn't been built, and that's what drove the housing crisis, so we're going to force you to approve housing. And we're going to force you to approve it by making you zone for it. You don't have to build it, they know we can't build it, but you have to zone for it so that a builder could come in and build it. And so I think, as I mentioned, there are probably a lot of unintended consequences with that. LA County really got the worst in California. You guys got really big arenas. The other thing that's happening is that these laws have passed for affirmatively furthering fair housing and equity, it's a big thing now. And communities like San Marino, which have what's considered exclusionary zoning and don't allow any multifamily, got on purpose a higher arena than, and this is baked into the legislation, they on purpose got a higher arena than communities that already have a lot of low-income housing.
And then just because I, I, I want you to know that, first of all, I should preface this by saying that I actually have kind of a progressive opinion about housing and that kind of stuff, but I do want, well, I'm all over the place about this one in particular, but you say that we're kind of pigeonholed into doing this, and I just want to say, I mean, we are and we aren't, like, we do as a community have the choice, while it would be very expensive, we could make the decision to sue the state, arguing that the legislation was based on erroneous data, and therefore we don't have to, I mean, so I'm just saying that that could be one of our options. Not saying that we have to, but like, I, you know, like, we could actually go to the state of California and say, we disagree with this, we disagree with the construction lobby and the development lobby who has positioned themselves to get all of these laws put in place that are going to harm communities, not just San Marino, but other communities, for their own gain and not for the, our community gain.
Sure, there are always choices. I can tell you that none of those lawsuits has ever succeeded, but that's absolutely a choice. Choosing to delay approval of a housing element and pay the ten thousand dollar a day fine is a choice. I mean, there, there are always, there are always choices. My recommendation is that you do your darndest to get something certified.
Thank you, Jane.
Absolutely.
I have a question. So Jane, if, again, we have no obligation to build ourselves this property. So the, I guess the, the solution or resolution to this, this, this issue at hand is, if we, if we allocate twenty acres of zoning within our city limits, that would be zoned for multi-unit housing or whatever variation of units per acre that are required, and no one comes to do it, no one comes to San Marino to build anything, or, or through our objective design criteria, they don't meet the criteria to be approved. We are then in compliance, and, and that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
You have to make development feasible.
Right.
But you're not going to change San Marino's sky-high housing prices or its small lot sizes where a developer can't get the economy of scale to come in and, and do what a nonprofit developer would, would need to build. You, you might get some mixed-income projects, but it would be very difficult to get...
All low-income.
Low-income, yeah.
And if I may, just following up on that, if we designate twenty acres somewhere in San Marino as falling within the requirement, the, the property that we designate could be commercially occupied, could have certain residential units in there already, and then it's a matter of the developer to buy them up and then essentially tear them down and build these two hundred and seventy-five square foot little holes in the wall, right?
You know, that's a really good question, and let me tell you why. No developer is going to come in and displace existing residents because they have to pay for that under the new laws. And so if you're, if you're zoning something that's recently been developed with multifamily or mixed use, and it's a recent development, the state's not going to allow it because the potential for it to develop, redevelop within eight years is so low.
So they not only, not only are wanting the twenty acres so designated, but they want to have the veto power over what you designate?
Yes.
They covered all the bases, Howard.
Oh, they didn't. What they did is, well, don't get me started.
Well, we'll, we'll talk more when we get into the policy options.
I have a question. So at the beginning of your presentation, you said cities are statutorily obligated to, I can't remember exactly the language, but to develop our zone for housing.
Plan for, plan for...
For housing needs of all segments of the community. What is the community? Is the community us, or is the community California? Is it the county?
Another great question. And the, so the community is San Marino, but the first part of that paragraph was existing and projected and future residents.
So when we're looking at existing, future and planned residents, we can look at data that we collect about who lives here and who we expect reasonably to want to live here in the future.
Absolutely, and you should.
When you're, when you're pointing out, for example, the specific holes of senior affordable housing and young family affordable housing, I mean, we could target those populations. That would be reasonable?
And you should.
Yeah, okay.
It's on my next slide.
Okay.
Everybody ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So as we were just talking, Chair Dustin, San Marino has a strong community identity around its residential neighborhoods and its beautiful architecture. We see that in your general plan, it's in your strategic plan, and we saw that through community input, right? So that's part of what San Marino is, and that's something that we need to protect. So the needle that we have to thread here is, how do we protect those things that are the greatest value to the community as much as we can while still meeting those identified housing needs and the statutory requirements? So that's a tough needle to thread, right? We've got to be really careful what we do. And I'm going to go over some policy options for you to consider. Their outline's kind of in the staff report. I want your feedback on these so that I can prepare a draft strategy for the city council's consideration, but I also need to hear some public input on these. And I want you to understand, not trying to be like in your face about this, but I want you to understand that you're not going to be able to achieve a certified housing element that meets community needs by choosing just like one of these options. You're going to have to sew together, back with the sewing analogy, stitch together, knit together, several approaches to come up with something, a solution that's going to work, it's going to meet the statutory requirements, it's going to do all these little bubbles, it's going to, it's going to address your identified housing needs, what the community wants, and consistency with the general plan and those strong protections for San Marino's neighborhoods, its history and the way it developed. So the question again is, how do we do that without destroying the valuable residential areas? And the next slide will be commercial areas, so we'll move on to that. So there's a number of options. Mr. Brody, you mentioned earlier, you know, can we use the shoe stretcher? That's a great analogy, by the way. And reach out and stretch San Marino out? Sure, there's an annexation process, and I don't think San Marino's annexed any land for maybe thirty years, twenty-five, it's been, it's been a really long time. I think Aldo had just started working for the city the last time there was an annexation. So it's been a while. There's not a lot of places to go, it's expensive to annex, but there, that's a potential that we have to look at in the housing element anyway. So if that's something you're interested in exploring more, we're going to be exploring it more because it's something we're required to do. If wanted, if you, I'll get deeper into it if it's something that you want to really look at. So another option is to really promote the development of accessory dwelling units. You saw that that was really popular with residents, that was one of the things that they think will fit into the fabric. You could actually meet almost half of your arena just with accessory dwelling units based on the number that you developed from the last year since you got rid of that minimum parcel size. That avoids exclusionary zoning because it allows smaller housing units in existing neighborhoods that are upscale neighborhoods, and it addresses local housing needs. The downside is that you can't meet your entire arena with that. So you have to do more than just promoting the development of ADUs, but again, it meets community needs, it affirmably furthers fair housing, and that's, you can meet almost half your arena that way. And you can meet your arena at different affordability levels, there's kind of a safe harbor... And you can meet your arena at different affordability levels. There's kind of a safe harbor that SCAG and HCD have already come up with, what they're going to assume the affordability levels are. So another option, and, and this actually came out of community input. This was an idea that one of the residents had. It's also something that's being done in other communities and this might feel like getting rid of single-family neighborhoods. But it's something that would preserve the architecture of, because you would only allow it within existing homes. And that's to allow interior divisions of up to three units. Now, before you think triplex, we're not going to do it. Let me remind you that you can already do an ADO, an detached ADO and a JDO in a single-family home. That's three units. And the state has preempted you if you do that. They rule on it and you can't have any authority over it, right? You can't subject it to anything. You just have to sign off on the building permit. If you do this instead, you have authority over that. Someone could still come in and do an ADO and a JDO, but they have those size constraints and all those limitations. So something I want you to think about, dividing existing home interiors and up to three units. That's commonly known as missing middle housing or gentle density in planning circles. Another program would assist homeowners in creating JDOS in an existing bedroom. So I'm sure you know JDOS are very small units carved out of an existing bedroom. It is the most inexpensive way to add units. So if there was a funding program that the city came up with, we can talk later about ways to do that. There is some availability of funding. You would need to identify what that's going to be. And launch this program that would allow existing homeowners, like those seniors that you have that own their own homes, but they're very low income, right? 25% of them. This could allow them to either stay in the, in the smaller unit and rent out the larger house or have someone rent that, that room from their house and they would have their separate entrance and, and cooking facility. So that's something that we should look at. And then there's rezoning the school site Stoneman and Southwest to upzone them. Stoneman, I think is a real opportunity because that's a city site and you guys could control that redevelopment through the RFP. So for development of the site. So you basically have a, a program in your housing element that would say, we're going to put out an RFP for the Stoneman, for redevelopment of the Stoneman site. And it's going to say that whoever builds it has to include at least 20% affordable. Something like that. So HCD would count that. We could also look at upzoning Southwestern Academy. That's a gorgeous, gorgeous academy. I don't want, I don't want anything bad to happen to that. We have not engaged property owner interest, but if, if they needed to revamp the dormitory so that they actually met a sense of definition of the unit rather than having shared bathrooms like they do now, then they would have to have more density allowed on the site to do that. But that kind of housing would not meet Rena, but if they built housing that was for teachers on site, that would meet Rena. That same goes for any of the school sites. If they build housing for teachers on the site, that counts towards the Rena.
Would that go for religious institutions as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and there's a movement to do exactly that in a lot of communities.
Jane, would a, um, would a boarding care home be, account towards Rena? And what I mean, like when, uh, when my mom was alive, there was a house that she had that was converted into, well, it, it was a family who owned it, but then they had four seniors who lived there and were being taken care of. They didn't necessarily have their own bedroom and kitchen, but there was four or five people who were living there, you know? So I'm just wondering, like, does a boarding care account to our 397? Would it?
No, unfortunately it doesn't. So, so those, it would if they had a little mini kitchen in there and a closet and a separate entrance. And that would, that would count. So it depends on how you set it up.
I thought you needed a bathroom too.
Yeah. I assumed the rooms had bathrooms in them. So let's move on to commercial. So if you're going to protect the single family in the historic neighborhoods, you got to put the density somewhere. You gotta, you gotta do the big stuff somewhere else. So this slide looks at options for doing that in your commercial zone. I mean, you guys have single family and C1. That's, that's about it. So let's look at that. The first option is really the only one we've talked about. That's multifamily zoning at 20 units per acre. That directly addresses the Rena and it also has the advantage of being legislative act, rezoning those properties. The city council gets to pick out with the planning commission's recommendation, gets to decide what sites that goes on. You would absolutely need to have those objective standards in place. Because if they come in and it's by right and then it's exempt from CEQA because it's ministerial and you need that in place. This is not something that we could do immediately. We would instead include a program within the housing element to identify and rezone sites. You have to do it within the next three years. Don't get it in three years, then the state takes away your certification and you are now on a four-year update cycle instead of the eight-year update cycle that you're on right now. So that's a pretty significant penalty. Of course, community opposition and possibly no net loss impacts. Really any of these could be impacted by that no net loss law. Another option, I know no one wants to hear mixed use, but I'm going to say it anyway. It's mixed use or live work. And this is kind of a simple option because you could do it simply by changing that residential ratio that's in your zoning code now. So that, so that it's minimum square feet per unit gets small enough that you could do 20 units per acre as part of a mixed use development. It's simple. It's inexpensive. We can do it now and probably still do it under the negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. The, the bad thing about it is it would then apply to any C1 site. So you guys wouldn't be able to kind of fine tune where that kind of development should go. Community opposition, of course, and we're back to those objective standards. And then the last kind of idea I have for you, and I have done this in other communities, is a workforce housing overlay zone. And this is something the property owners tend to really like because it really maximizes their flexibility and it allows the market to really drive where it's going to happen. You choose where it's going to go. And basically the workforce housing overlay zone, once you put it on a site, allows any of the underlying land uses of C1. Or it allows housing at a density of 20 units per acre or both. You can do both on the same site. So it's a mixed use thing. It's a, somebody who's got a business and they want to add two living units to it for their own employees that'll live on their own site. That's great. That works for all that kind of stuff. Again, you would adopt that ordinance into your code now and then include a program to find some sites to put that on, to put that overlay zone on in your housing element. The, the big downfall on this one is again, that no net loss thing. Because you would need to zone enough to make up for any losses that you had through no net loss. So if you put it on one property and you said, okay, 20 is an acre, we expect to get 10 out of this one. And the property owner comes in and says, I want two, it's still two units that, you know. You can count, but it's not what you put it in. So then you'd need to turn around and find more sites and rezone them if you don't already have enough to make up for that shortfall. So a lot to talk about. Um, let's take public input and I'd really like to hear your direction on those policy options. I'll next prepare a draft housing strategy for a city council workshop in April. Following that workshop and direction from the council, we'll be preparing our HCD review draft. That goes to HCD and they get 60 days to review it. And during that time, you should know they will take input from anyone. And they do. They very often get input from a lot of people. So they could be members of your community. They might be advocacy groups. It could be anyone who wants to have input gets to have input during that 60-day period. Concurrent to that, we would be doing the secret documentation, the negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration, and then prepare a planning commission draft for a public hearing for your body again and your recommendation to the city council. So that's outlined here. We are here where the arrow is and the objective is to get down here at the blue button, HCD certification. So we're marching down this arrow. Each of the orange dots on here is an additional public input opportunity.
And at, we, do we have to go to, what's our timeline for HCD certification? Is that by the end of the year? Is it by?
We, so we, you need to adopt right here, the city council hearing to adopt. We need to adopt that by October 14th so we can send it to HCD by October 15th of this year. That's a short timeframe. But just to make you feel a little better, I have another LA jurisdiction that I'm just starting now on. So it's, you're not in the worst shape. So that concludes my presentation. I'm, I'm happy to leave it up if you guys want to go back to a slide or I can pull it back up at any time.
Good.
No, go ahead, Chair. Chair, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it sounds like she needs input from the public. So
Right.
I was going to move to that.
No, that's a, that's a good, good strategy. And so I do see a, a raise hand amongst our public. And so, um, let me go down the list here. So Josh, I see you're there. Do you want to unmute yourself and provide your comments?
I think I am unmuted. If I'm not unmuted, everybody start waving.
You're good. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Josh. I live over in South Pasadena. The first time I actually knew you existed is when I went to med school and of the 168 people at USC med school, eight of them graduated from your high school, the first time I heard San Marino existed. I'm here because I read an article from your last meeting in the San Marino Tribune where what was described was as your route for meeting Rena wasn't allowed. The presentation you got was great. It's much better than who we have over in South Pasadena. They're horrible. But you guys are a city of 13,000 people. You guys are all single-family homes, very proud of it. And you don't have the blatant history like South Pasadena does of restricting black and Hispanic people. They like wrote that into their deeds. But you guys, because of your single-family homes, has effectively done that. Of your 13,000 people, you have 55 African-Americans, 800 Latinos. This is part of the reason the state wrote these laws because you guys have not allowed anybody who could, who could only afford to live in an apartment to live in your city. The current cheapest home in San Marino is 1.3 million. You only have three homes under 2 million. So you know, it's not exclusive to anybody who could afford 1.3 million. It's exclusive to everybody else. Now, the, Jane actually gave a great presentation of all the laws. You know, I mean, a lot of cities don't get this kind of presentation. So you know, you guys, you guys have a lot of work you have to do. 397 units. You guys are actually pretty lucky because you're 13,397. South Pasadena is 25,000 people and they have 2,000 units that they have to zone for. That's because you guys are like, here's the freeways. You guys are here with no transportation. So you guys are pretty lucky about that. You guys have to do 240 low-income units. There are specific laws about these low-income units. You guys can only claim the amount of ADUs that you produced last year. So you guys, if I had ballpark estimate, you guys are in the 20 to 25 range of ADUs. You could claim 280s over the eight years. You can only claim about 40 of those for low income. So you have to find a place for 200 low-income units. And that's going to be most likely in your commercial district. Now, Commissioner Boyle talked about suing the city and I think she was trying to reference the Embarcadero Institute's data. That is a institute that was basically one person doing research in Palo Alto. She lives in an $8 million home and she's donated a lot of money to the NIMBYs in Palo Alto. No person actually believes any of that stuff from the Embarcadero Institute is accurate. And if you guys want to sue doing that, using that data, by all means, just a waste of money. So I just want to encourage you guys to listen to what Jane, that, the presentation Jane gave you. Do it again. Listen to it again. Listen to the laws. You guys are going to be required to zone for housing and commercial units at a minimum units of 20 units per acre. And if you don't, you'll have 120 days at October 15th, 120 days where any property owner could actually build property and you can't say no. Even if you get the housing element later, any property owner could build anything for 120 days. If it's 100% moderate or 20% low income, you guys have no authority to say no. But in the future, you know, once you have this housing element, you got to understand San Marino, because of your single-family zoning, because of your exclusionary, you guys are one of the top cities that people want to sue. And it's not just developers that could sue you. It's housing advocates. H A L H L A could sue you if you guys reject a housing project that is zoned accurately. So you know, Jane gave you good, good, good presentation. If you guys actually don't turn in a housing element on time, by law, any property owner could develop anything as long as it's 20% affordable and 20% low income or 100% moderate income. If you guys try to stop it, you'll get sued not only by the state, but you will get sued by other organizations and have to pay. So that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chair, I don't see any other hands raised at this moment. I'll give people an opportunity to prepare their, their remarks, if any. If you give them a second, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this point. And so with that said, I don't see any interest in more comments. And so now we can move on to the planning commission discussing this, this topic for tonight. John, you're muted.
Sorry. Is there anybody who wants to start off with some thoughts?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. As strongly as I feel that this is entirely inappropriate, we nevertheless are a democracy. And what they did up in Sacramento, we will have to apply here and make it work. Whether we do so with a smile or with a reluctant frown, but it has to happen. And I agree with the last speaker that we just can't sue and think that in the state of California, we're going to get a decent hearing on, on this topic. So it's a matter of choosing where we will find the 20 acres to present and that's the key. And my thought is, especially when Ms. Riley mentioned religious institutions, the certain school areas that might be applicable. We're, we're going as a society from, as we all know, from bricks to clicks, as they say. From essentially retail stores to shopping online. And there are many businesses that may not make it. You got to take a hard look at that and see what opportunities there are in taking advantage of certain commercial areas. I think if, if one was to develop a an affordable structure for up to 397 units, I think that that person will have to look at the economics of the situation. And I, I don't know if we're all that attractive under those circumstances. I think some outlying cities may have more of an attraction than we would have. But nevertheless, my thought is to apply these rules to areas where it will not impact the traditional single-family dwelling. I think we've got to maintain that regardless what happens in Sacramento. We got to do our best to keep the community the way it's been. We got to do our best to keep the community the way it's been for sixty, seventy, eighty years as a lovely, architecturally significant R one type zone community, residential suburban. I mean, that's what attracted us here, and that's what we've got to maintain. And there's ways that we must creatively approach this issue. And anyway, that's just my thoughts.
And Chair, if I may, I don't want to speak out of turn, so you can certainly say I should not speak here, but I, and I apologize, Commissioner Wright, but if you don't mind, I want to talk about that, that the religious institution component here. We have several churches in town, some that are zoned in commercial zones, others that are zoned in residential zones. And so there's there's sort of that mixture there. My, my opinion with going down that track is this, in that the religious institutions in our community have, you know, we sort of embrace them. We embrace those sites. We embrace those, those small communities, almost to the point of, of wanting to protect them in some way. And, and going down a path of looking at those sizes options for some kind of a housing policy, to me, almost gets away from our feelings that we have towards these institutions. And moreover, the amount of potential units that we can grab from looking at religious properties wouldn't be a high enough number to, to meet our arena obligation. So from my perspective, I think there are other sites that are worthwhile looking at. And just, just by, by my opinion and how I see residents sort of embrace our religious institutions in our community. And I could be wrong. And so of course, tell me that I'm wrong, but that's just my feeling with that.
Commissioner Wright.
I, I hear what you're saying, Director. And I have other comments as well. First, I want to compliment Ms. Riley and Banker for a very well-done report and presentation. Very impressive and very appreciated. Secondly, I feel the need, just for a small line, a small line, just to say that, boy, have times changed because my entire career was built on the precedent, believe me, precedent, one of the strongest precedents of all, that zoning is a municipal affair. And for very good reasons, of course, but nobody knows better how to zone your city than your city. So yes, times have changed. So I just feel the need to just, just comment on that. It's so, it's just really, it's really a change. And you know, change is hard, but change can be good, obviously. As to this, personally, I think when I heard Ms. Riley's presentation, that I think we have to take advantage of ADUs. She thinks we can use, that could maybe be half of our arena. So I would definitely recommend that we, we include ADUs and we include junior ADUs because we got to do them anyway. So, so let's have that be as much as, as we can. And let's have that to the affordable part as well. As far as getting our multifamily obligation, if you will, I'm leaning more towards perhaps the Stoneman property because I do think it's very appealing that we would have the the, we would have the responsibility and we would have some control over that. That's not without issues, you know, and, and maybe, maybe a portion of the Stoneman property because it's ours. I mean, I don't know, maybe we can at least take a portion of it and do a portion somewhere else. Maybe talk to Southwestern because it'd be the same idea dealing with these school properties. I would like to see us at least explore that as, as any multifamily obligation. I think when we look at, looking at commercial zones, I for one am very reluctant to do that because of the notion that it's all of them. And I just think that's too, yeah, it's probably probable that people aren't going to do it. It costs too much money. It's too hard to do, et cetera, et cetera. But if they did, it would so significantly change our community as to density. I, I just don't think that that would be something that would be a positive for our community. So I'm not as high on that idea. And I'm not as high on the sort of the three units, especially if they can also have an ADU and a junior ADU. And that's five, I'm not, I'm just not as, as high on that, maybe because I just really haven't thought enough about it. But I see AD, junior ADUs, maybe the Stoneman, Southwestern. That's kind of where I see us going. But before we do any of it, I think our number one, maybe a little outside our, this, this discussion, but our number one recommendation to council has to be to get the objective standards for any of these properties on the books now, as soon as possible. This can be done really quickly because it can always be amended and it probably will be amended when we actually apply it and find some problems. But our, our one properties in commercial zones and any other properties that are affected by what we're doing here today and what we're recommending, we need those objective standards, priority number one. That's my two cents.
Shall I go next?
Please.
Okay. Um, you know, it's interesting. I have like seven different pieces of paper in front of me and I'm probably not going to address any of them. But, um, you know, it's interesting because even though I am the one that brought up the possibility of suing the state, I also mentioned that I am probably the more progressive, I might guess of the bunch, simply from the standpoint that I really do believe that we need to have, we need to have younger demographics coming in here that have a play, you know, just this idea of having a starter home. And you know, I'm going to, it's a terrible way to say it, but just moving up the ranks.
I totally agree.
And, um, you know, so for that reason, I should say that I personally, I am very anti-ADU. And the only reason why is because I don't want to live in a community where every single house has a little accessory dwelling unit next to it. I don't want something hovering from the garage, you know, behind me, looking into my backyard. That's not something I want. I would much rather us look at ways that we can be creative in terms of housing that also would then attract and supplement our commercial districts because it would attract businesses, it would attract supermarkets, it might attract coffee shops. You know, whatever it is, because you just have more of a population that's getting out and about. I think Stoneman is a really great property to look at in terms of what development opportunities are there. I also think that duplexes might be a really, really interesting, something to explore. But, and I don't mean duplexes anywhere. I mean, if we can identify certain streets, like, I mean, I'm going to say this off the top of my head. Nobody yell at me, nobody email me, but like, you know, let's say South Los, like Los Robles, south of Mission, where there are smaller homes, it's right next to a commercial district. Maybe those houses can become duplexes. It assists the, you know, commercial district by having a little bit more density in that area. Maybe, you know, I can't think of another area, but maybe certain homes that, you know, are adjacent to Huntington that might be, you know, that might work in that, but maybe not a duplex, you know, in a full residential area, like, you know, that's completely surrounded by single family homes, you know, but like strategic streets to look at that. It's just, it's just an option to throw out there. And I think that the other thing that we need to think about, just in terms of more affordable housing, and I'm saying this not, I know that it is not going to add to our numbers, but you know, there are a lot of homes in our area that are priced reasonably well. A investor comes in, purchases them. I can say that this happened to a house less than a block from me. It was priced well for, for a starter family. An investor came in, purchased it, completely gutted everything architecturally significant about the inside. It is now on the market for five hundred thousand dollars more than what it was originally sold for, and it's been on the market for five months. That doesn't support a starter family coming in. And I don't know how we can put in ordinances or codify that to make sure that those kind of things don't happen. But I think that that is actually something that hurts us more than having, you know, certain townhouses being built. Because now what we're dealing with is homes that are just sitting there completely vacant. Which is the other thing that I really want to, you know, mention is that I think that while we're doing this and we look at our general plan, and I think we need to really review our design review guidelines. I think we need to think now what the design review guidelines would be if we are talking about townhouses or duplexes and what things we want in place for those. And I think we need to look at our general plan in terms of really making sure that we have height and story limits in our C one districts because that could absolutely help us in terms of, yeah, we might open up all of C one for multi-use properties, but if we have restrictions, like they can only go two stories high, not every single unit or not every single building is going to, what, you know what I'm saying? Investors aren't going to, you know, maybe want to develop those because we've had, we've put height limits. And I've brought this up before. I know it's not possible, but maybe there are different rules that we can put into place for developers or investors that, as opposed to those families who are really vested in our community. And look, I am looking at my notes. Having taxes on vacant properties and vacant commercial buildings. I think that that's something, you know, it's, if the, if the fix is to get people housed, if the fix is to get people, you know, California residents to be able to afford certain things, then we need to also have those homes available at that price point. And if there's a house on my street that is sitting there, that could go on the market for one point six million dollars and it's just sitting there while the family has abandoned it, like, that seems to me that this is an opportunity to highly tax them, to incentivize them to do something with that property, whether it is renting it, whether it is selling it. You know, whatever it is, we need to, we need to address that problem. And the only other note that I have, and it's not really important to this discussion, but I do think that there should be the monetary penalties for any damage to a home like we had on the last agenda should be equal to the monetary damages that are tree removals. Because if we're going to charge somebody ten thousand dollars to remove an established tree, we should definitely be charging them more than just the permit price for doing damage to our homes. And the, and so that's just something in terms of the general plan notes. And although I can email you all of this, because I know I wrote a lot that was more than this discussion needed to be. But, um, I'm done.
I just, thank you for that, Vice Chair. I just wanted to interject something real quick here before I continue to solicit comments from the other commissioners. Something Vice Chair Boyle said. I want people to understand that this is a brainstorming session, so don't feel inhibited by presenting an idea that may be considered heretical by certain members of the community. We're not, we're not saying that the ideas that you're throwing out now, that you're even in support of them or, but we just want to hear ideas. So please don't let that be a hindrance. Anyone else have comments?
Yeah, I'll speak to some of the thoughts I've had about what was presented and, you know, possible solutions. You know, I, I understood and appreciate all the options available to us that Jane presented to us. And I think, I think there's ultimately, you know, I guess from my perspective as a, as a real estate broker on one end, I think ultimately the market will decide what will get built, constructed. I think our obligation and priority right now to, to the residents of the city and city council and, and the community at large, as defined by Jane, is to have the opportunity and the allotment that is required. And, and absolutely to Chair Wright's point, get the objective criterias in right away to what that will be. Because to the most part, that's going to be the ability for us to at least architecturally be sensitive to what is going to be up and down Huntington Drive, right? Or up and down Mission, the Mission District. And, and you know, so I almost feel with the two hundred some odd ADUs, J, 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 ADUs or ADUs that we allow, you know, and then the remaining two hundred plus. If all C one had the opportunity to be mixed use, you, we need our obligation, one, or most likely would need our obligation. And two, the market will decide who's going to come in, buy the commercial property, go through the entitlement process of developing plans, et cetera, to get that approval. Still have it be financially feasible for a developer to do so with a mix of low income housing requirements, whatever, whatever that may be. As opposed to looking for other avenues to get creative for a solution. I absolutely agree with comments that the community has made, that there is a need. You know, I have, you know, personally experienced families that do struggle. I know that do struggle to live in the city. You know, there's, there's, there's families, I'll be outright, you know, that, that I know of Asian background that work, you know, two full-time jobs and drive Uber at night in order to pay rent in a home in San Marino, so they can send their kids to the best school in the district, in California, for that matter, right? And I don't know how many of you know that or how many of you are cognizant of that, but that is a reality that exists here in the city. And to Commissioner Boyle's point, we need to not only be cognizant of the efforts we're making, but that they actually address the community, that that is here in the city. Okay? And, and you know, I don't know how many folks on this have, in the commission or in the community, have children in the district or attending San Marino schools. But you know, when I went to register, you know, we went to register a child and to hear that right now in the district, it's approximately thirty, forty percent of transfers from outside of the district to, to come into the city, which we with arms wide open accept, or else we wouldn't have enough head count to operate our schools. It is a true issue and I'm not disagreeing with any of the arguments from any side of the fence. No pun intended. But I, I think as we make these decisions and as thoughtful as possible, we want to make sure we present options to, to, to city council and, and to, to, to our, our, our city and our residents that is actually going to address the issue and not just kind of be a fluff and buff, per se. We really want it to be something that's feasible, that's attainable. And that if a developer can find means to acquire a property, develop it, get the entitlements for it and construct something that meets our objective standards, they should be able to do so. And we would have residents in the city that are attending schools, frequenting our local businesses and contributing to the economy that we all are looking to support. So I think, I think there, there's, there's definitely among the various options discussed, there is a, a path for. And I think more so than trying to be strategic of how we can skirt or side skirt or ignore what is being put forth to us, we need to address it head on. Hear more from the community of, of what the underlying issues are. You know, we hear people that they complain that this commission and other review committees are too difficult for, you know, renovations. Yet I hear from the same folks that, well, we want this, we love it, yeah, let's do it. And I don't, I think that's almost hypocritical to the extent that we have not been truly consistent, right? And so I think what we can do and what we can help the community, the, the, our constituents that are concerned and to address the community that truly are low income and struggling is to be thoughtful when we have these projects come before us or, or have these developers come before us to be truly give guidance on what the requirements of the city are, to stand by what we really think. to stand by what we really think we should be, should be done. And to maintain, you know, the charm of San Marino and the beauty of San Marino, and what makes San Marino special. And do so in a thoughtful way which, which all these legislation, legislative actions are kind of nudging us in the side to do. So, you know, it's pretty long-winded, but at the same time, I want us to be more thoughtful of exactly who these community members are that we're trying to extrapolate eight years out and look for and have interest in. And as we make decisions on the objective standards that they are truly adhered to and not just because, you know, someone might not like the particulars of that one scenario, but that can truly be met, right? I've had so many members of the community come and say, well, we've met the, you know, the design review guidelines, and they're all objective, and why did I still not get rejected? I can just shrug and say, well, you know, you had a committee of five or seven and you heard what they said and, you know, you try your best to adhere to the advice. So I think it's feasible, I think it's possible, I think we will look to options that will be more encompassing than just, you know, selectively choosing what will work for, you know, a single area or single institution. And I think if we are thoughtful enough and thorough enough in making our objective standards, I think we'll be able to achieve what the state has requested. Thank you.
Commissioner Okazaki, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a few. I think, you know, San Marino could show leadership and really take into heart what the legislators and the governor have done with this new legislation. You know, and I think it's been pointed out that we do have a problem at the school district. You know, we don't have enough enrollment. It's not just LA, though. I mean, at San Marino, other schools also, the enrollment is going down. That's part of the problem, but, we do have a problem with people being able to afford to live in San Marino. And I think you saw in the survey that that was one of the major issues people pointed out. Those who are living in San Marino today, those people that are paying the San Marino taxes, sending their kids to school, they are also cognizant of the problem that the state legislators have identified and want a statewide solution, and they want every single city, every single citizen in the state to work together to try to help those, you know, who are homeless and those who cannot afford to live anywhere, let alone in San Marino. So, you know, I think we could show leadership in really finding sort of a heartfelt solution to solve some of the states and the national problem with housing. And, you know, we could afford to do that as a rich city and rich community, we could afford to provide. We just have to have an open mind about all the ideas that Jane brought up. And I think, you know, not just trying to meet the minimum, we could probably even do better than finding 397 units. But we have to be thoughtful of the people who, I think, as Jane pointed out, there are the homeowners who are gonna object, who are gonna be adjacent to some of these possibly, you know, higher-density housing, low-income housing. They're gonna be, you know, not-in-my-backyard opponents to any kind of heavier, I mean, higher-density dwelling units. And those who are gonna oppose zoning changes. But we need to look at every and all options that were presented, and even more, to try to, as I said, have an understanding that we have a problem in California for sure, and nationally too. And we as a community of people in San Marino, the 4,000 of us who live here, who could afford to live here, and be open and be compassionate about those who cannot live anywhere. And see what we could, you know, show the state, what a community like ours, who may have had other reasons why we had this kind of a community of all residential, you know, R1s, that we could really change with the times and be more compassionate with the issues of today and provide affordable housing for those, you know, workforce housing, low-income housing, and other housing needs of the people of the state of California. And I think we should show as a planning commission some leadership to present to the City Council, you know, what we could do to solve the problem of the state. And if we show leadership in our community, I think other cities will follow suit, you know, what we are willing to accept in our share and even more, to meet the needs of Southern California and the state of California. And like I said, it's a national problem too with housing. Anyway, I think that's part of it. I haven't thought enough about it, but I appreciated all the options that Jane presented. I have even thought about those. I have personally thought that the conversion of a commercial, allowing zoning for mixed use would be a good idea. But as, who was that? I forgot. Talked about the objective criteria for how we want to do that. I think we should look at that, but obviously we should also look and see all these various options, what is the minimum and the maximum possible with each one of those ideas? And it's, I'm sure the final solution is a mix of all of those things, not just one. But, you know, like Kevin was saying, though, it shouldn't just be a facade that we, you know, we allow for the zoning, but if it cannot be fully developed into a real, true project, then we really are not solving the problem. And like I said, I want San Marino to really show leadership in really solving the real problem, and not just kind of, you know, a facade of a solution just by allowing zoning upgrade, or zoning change, but, you know, not a feasible project. That doesn't solve the problem. And I think I would like to participate as a commissioner to really solve the problem of the state and do our fair share and be a leader in coming up with those 397 units for the plan that we have to come up with. That's about it for now. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I enjoyed hearing the comments of all of you. I think I have a bad taste in my mouth for some of the ways that Sacramento is going about this, but I do think it's more than just a burden. It's an obligation. We as a community have an obligation to contribute to this demand for housing. And I think Commissioner Chang is correct. This can't just be something that we try to finesse solutions that look good on paper. They have to be things that are feasible and viable, but it isn't our job to make it happen. That's something that the market will decide. But we do need to make an earnest effort to make that available. I think Commissioner Wright is absolutely right on the money. Those objective criteria are our priority number one. They have to be developed ASAP. And I really think this is a problem that will be solved through diversity of solutions. I mean, you know, Ms. Riley gave us a superb presentation. I think there's a lot of options out there. They, it's not like any one of them is gonna be the magic bullet. And really, to be honest, not any one of them is gonna adequately provide the kind of solutions that we need for the people who need those problems solved. So it's gonna be a little bit of this, it's gonna be a little bit of that. But I think we really do need to urge the city to move ahead on objective criteria as soon as possible. There is a little bit of a commentary I want to make on, you know, the cost of housing in the city. I agree, you know, the number of vacant homes that I see in my neighborhood, and I think Vice Chair Boyle has brought this up for what she has seen in town. There has been a bad end result from the incessant march up in our property values. Now, we all love to see our property values go up, I mean, we're not stupid. But that doesn't come without a cost, and the cost is young families can't live here. When young families can't live here, we don't have children to go to school here. We have to start importing children from outside the district. You know, our school district, I think, needs to take some ownership in contributing to this dilemma cycle that I see where we constantly tout the quality of our schools to the property values. And again, it's good to have a good school district, but to have this mantra of, if we don't have the number-one school district in the entire state, your property values are gonna go in the toilet. That doesn't help, because it's moved us into a position now where homes in this town now become financial vehicles, not places to live and raise a family. And I think that, again, I'm not arguing against a good school district. Everybody wants a good school district. I went to school here from first grade through high school. My daughter went to school here from kindergarten through high school. There's a reason for why I'm here. But a good school district is enough. There's a, in my line of work in quality improvement, it's, you know, you don't want the, you don't want perfect to become the enemy of the good. And so I think that's something that needs to be recognized by our community, that this mindless pursuit of increasing property values isn't necessarily always a benefit. So that's all I have to say.
So he had one thing, if I may.
Yes.
What we're trying to do, and I think everyone kind of agrees with this, even the folks up in Sacramento, that we want to have a decent quality of life for every citizen, and a decent opportunity to go to a good school and have a good life. They enacted something which in my mind is atrocious. 275 square feet is a unit for people to live in. If you want to live in a, you know, there was a scene in Seinfeld where these fellows were living in a large chest of drawers, and that reminds me of that. I think they failed up in Sacramento, and I don't mind saying that. And I'm looking for solutions that retain this city as it was in terms of having a good school district, having a quality of life, having decent homes, having an R1 zone. And if we have to maybe read between the lines and seek out a solution that may be unique and may be different to accomplish that, to retain ourselves, I think we ought to be doing that. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think something you said in your earlier comments resonated with me about, you know, trying to prioritize our solutions to preserving the R1 neighborhoods that we have as best as possible. And, you know, I think, you know, looking at the commercial zones, looking at Stoneman, Vice Chair Boyle's idea about sort of maybe targeting specific neighborhoods that might be more amenable to duplexes, those are all things that will move to that end, I mean, preserving as best we can. And that R1.
Everything should be on the table with the goal of retaining the R1 zone, in my mind.
I just want to add only because this is what I hear when people talk about retaining certain things. You know, as I said, I think that we also need to, while I agree that we need to create, retain like the R1 feel and the small-community feel, and a kind of place where, you know, we're neighborly with one another, I would argue that we really do have an opportunity to be progressive in such a way that actually enhances our community again, in the same way of like when Huntington Drive was, you know, somewhere that I could spend my entire day on my bicycle going from shop to shop to shop, and all of my friends were there, and there were young couples moving in, and I was babysitting for them, you know, all of that kind of stuff. Like, I think that, while it is really important to, you know, so I'm just trying to say, I don't, I get triggered by the word retain because I still think we need to have some aspect of it that is attracting new people here because our seniors are gonna go away. Whether, you know, I mean, and I'm saying they're gonna go away because they're gonna die. You know, so what are we gonna do in our community to attract the new home buyers, and if it's creating affordable housing in Stoneman so that they can then buy a house on Floor Drive or Banning Way, you know, and then move over to Bedford, you know, like, I really believe in, you know, what we can do to attract attract a variety of people. And so I just feel like if we keep saying we want to retain our San Marino feel, the reality is, is that the San Marino feel has had, as our one public comment has made, you know, our San Marino feel has been very exclusionary. And so I think that we do need to look at ways that we can attract younger, diverse, you know, interesting couples that want to raise their families here.
Yeah, I can appreciate the comment that you make, Commissioner Boyle. But again, being a real estate broker, the market will determine what the value of the homes that get bought and not bought are, right? I mean, we can't, we can't set like limits on what a home can be sold for in the city of San Marino.
Kevin, I completely.
I mean, specific to the single-family home.
Kevin, I completely agree with you, but when we also have people who are coming in and flipping homes and then pricing families out, and the homes are sitting on the market for upwards of six months to somewhere five years, that means our market does not support that, and we need to figure out how to get those homes filled. Our market does not support these high-value homes that have been recently developed or gutted on the inside, and they're all done with mid-century modern and anthropology-like fixtures. They are sitting vacant, and they are not moving, and that does not support our community, and that does not support anybody who might want to live here. All it does is support investors and developers.
I mean, within a three-block walk of my house, there are five homes that fit that description that Vice Chair Boyle is describing. They're brand-new homes, they just scraped the ground and built a home. They are priced, you know, over $1,000 a square foot. And some of them have been there for three, four years.
Yeah, so the reality is, is the market is dictating what will be bought and sold. And right now, barely anything in our community is being bought and retained. It's like people are buying them and flipping them, and then it sits on the market again. And then another person buys it and does their little adjustment to it to think, oh, maybe now it's gonna sell. They increase the price by $250,000, and it sits on the market again. And no family is actually living in it. Like, I think that that is a huge problem.
And, you know, just to kind of move this along, I think we've got a lot of, I know, it's okay, and a lot of good conversations. And I too get frustrated as I'm out there driving around looking for these vacant houses and spotting them left and right. But a lot of good comments from the commission. But a lot of good comments from, from the commission, certainly comments that we can sort of help drive the direction moving forward and give, you know, some thought for, for Jane to, and, and her team to work towards a, a good product at the end. I do wanna let the, the planning commission know that I've already begun working on those objective standards. And in fact, I've already drafted an ordinance for those. I am now moving on to stage two of objective standards and looking to codify our residential design guidelines and codify our commercial design guidelines to specifically identify architectural styles and their character-defining features into our code. As to any developer who develops in our city will have to meet the objective standards of our design requirements. And so just know that, to give you some assurance, that I've already begun working on that and in fact have completed some of that. And those, those ordinances will be in front of you fairly soon for adoption and to move along to the city council for final adoption. And so just to give you guys that assurance. But a lot of good comments, and I think we, we can let Jane sort of hit the ground running and get those things, you know, get those policies and then really the next step moving forward. So I do, I do appreciate a lot of the time spent on this topic. It's not the last time we'll spend a lot of time on this topic, and so I appreciate it. So any, any final comments, Chair? If you wanna provide some, some final comments on closure on this one?
I just would like to thank Jane Riley for an exceptional presentation. It was a little bit scary, but it was very well put together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
It is scary, and you're certainly welcome. This is my thing.
So let's move on then to our next agenda item, number four, request for local historical landmark designation at seventeen seventy-nine Lombardi Road. And I believe we have a draft resolution.
Yeah, if the resolution looks, looks appropriate, you can certainly make a motion to act on it.
Commissioner Wright?
You knew it, you knew it. I have just one, one typo, section three. It should say, it should say it possesses high artistic value. Right? And I think you need to add the date of the resolution. I wrote that down, I'm not, now I'm not even sure what I, but, yeah, down below, it didn't have the date. Yeah, so those are my two comments. And with those two amendments, I would move to approve the, except if I don't have it, the resolution.
PCR, hold on, I just saw it. PCR twenty-one oh three.
Thank you.
Would, would someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
You're muted, Marlon. Sorry about that. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And let's move to the next item on the agenda, number five, reintroduction of natural wood shake and wood shingle to the city's pre-approved roof materials, colors, and applications list. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yeah, I'll make this brief. The, the city council has voted through a code amendment to reintroduce natural wood shake and wood shingles to the city codes. Back in two thousand and sixteen, under the California building code adoption process, the council adopted an ordinance that eliminated the wood shake and wood shingle roof. It was a, a recommendation given to the council by staff, given the nature of, of wood shake and, and, and fire hazards and, and the likes. But given that options are slim with respect to wood, or with respect to roofing materials at the moment, the council felt it necessary to reintroduce the product to our, our codes. And so given that the code, the building code has been amended to reintroduce natural wood shake or shingles at a minimum Class A fire rating standard, we then have to now go through the steps of formally putting it back on our pre-approved roof materials list. Our design review committee has already adopted and recommends this, the planning commission add the products back to the list. And so we are at this stage. And if the planning commission were to adopt this, or to approve this report, it'll, it'll end up amending the resolution and placing the products back on the pre-approved list. And that's the recommendation at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I have a question. So on the first page of the staff report, in the first paragraph there, the last sentence says, "The intent is to eventually phase out natural wood roofs in the city." Is that still the intent? Or is it just the intent to phase it out after more, more products are available to replace them?
Yeah, it, it is a, the, the intent was there in two thousand and sixteen to phase out wood roofs. And so it's sort of, sort of a leftover comment from a prior period. Of, of course, wood, natural wood shake or, or shingle roofs could be phased out by virtue of your statement being accurate, that other products are gonna be more available. For example, composition is, is certainly one of those products that is making a good design effort, and there may be others. In my lifetime here, seventeen years, I've seen a lot of products come and go, because they just fail. And so that, that is, the intention was a prior intention. I apologize, that's a leftover comment from a, a prior time.
Any other questions for staff? So we don't really have an applicant in this situation. So can I just move directly to public?
Yes.
Comment? So I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment period then, and I'll ask members of the public who would like to speak on this topic, either for, against, or about. Please indicate now.
Yes, Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself and, and provide your comment. You're still muted. There you go. Yeah.
Yes. By the way, the whole discussion of zoning and changing, change of San Marino is quite interesting. The, my only suggestion, I put it in a letter, which I hope you have, which says that essentially wood, wood roofs do not retain their, or may not retain their fire resistance status. They need to continuous, or some, some continuing application of a fire retardant. And so just to make sure that the wood roofs continue to have a Class A or close-to-it fire resistance, I suggested that, 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 that at the end of the piece about wood shakes and so forth being permitted, we add the words "and are continuously maintained in that classification by the property owner for the life of the roof." F with the tile, with steel, with composition. There's no continuous maintenance, but with wood there is. And I think the, the, the need for that should be planted in a statute. That's, that's all my suggestion. I don't know if you got my letter, but I sent it.
I did, Michael, I did, I received it.
Did you get forwarded, though?
Yeah, I have to check on that.
Okay.
Are there any other? Oh, go ahead.
Anyway, that's, that's the substance of it. I do point out that the Los Angeles Fire Department is very much, well, in fact, Los Angeles bans, I think, wooden roofs pretty much, the city of Los Angeles. And the, you'll see the, but they, they, they do in their official report, indicate that the fire-resistant life of treated wood shingles is limited. And you can go online and see for sale fire retardant items that are specifically for wood roofs. So if you have a wood roof, you go online and buy your five gallons or your, or hire somebody that can spray it on there, or put it on with a brush, and you put it on every few years in order to keep your fire resistant. So it's, it's definitely a problem. And wood is a way, it's a way out. Well, one more comment then. In my area, which, under the, under the recent historical guidelines, I now live in San Marino Heights, on Bellhaven Road, thirteen hundred Bellhaven Road. And the, I've surveyed on my area, and it, and I'm sure originally started out as all wood. It is now about sixty percent tile, mainly because tile is, is easily put on. So people are choosing tile, and one of the reasons is, no fire, does not support fire. So I suggest that we make sure that the wood roofs also do not support fire. Okay, I quit.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak to this topic? I don't see anybody.
I don't see any hands raised, Chair.
All right, then I'm gonna close the public comment period, and we'll move to deliberations amongst the commission. Commissioner Brody, why don't you give us your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of re-establishing wood roofs. I don't know how many would come in for such an application, but it is not, in my opinion, the appropriate way to go. There are a lot of new products out there. We should wait, maybe vet them through the DRC and the planning commission, and, and get them approved. I, I think having this interim measure with wood roofs is a huge mistake from a fire protection basis. I don't know, did we have at any time any input from, from our local fire department people on, on this particular enactment, anything?
No, the, the, that's a good comment, Commissioner. They, they did, they were part of the, the exercise for the adoption of the ordinance several months ago before the city council. And they had a hand in, in the language of the ordinance. And because they had a hand in the, in the drafting of the ordinance, recommended that, that the roofs go from minimum Class B requirements to minimum Class A, which is a higher fire rating for the product.
Right. Okay, so they, they blessed this particular iteration. And I'm certain that once we have substitutes that are through the DRC and the planning commission, then this would become an obsolete scenario. Yeah, maybe I could support it under that circumstance.
Vice Chair Boyle, do you have some thoughts on? Oh, you're on mute.
Um, I fully support bringing back this material. Not only do I think that it, you know, with the new classification of, you know, Class A, more fire resistant, I think that it's, honestly, my biggest, the, the thing that influences me the most on this is that I think for people who want to do historic preservation on their homes, this is something that will really benefit that, as opposed to going to these synthetic materials and will, as we talk about, you know, home values and everything, I think that that will actually be a, a long-term benefit for those homes. I know a lot of residents have expressed wanting to, you know, allow, they have delayed getting their roofs repaired, hoping that this would come back. And so, so I'm fully in support of this.
Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I think it's a slippery slope. I, I, again, no pun intended. I, I think the Class A is good, that, that that was added. But at the same time, I also feel like, you know, to the, the community member's comment, now you're putting the onus on the homeowner to maintain his roof. And, you know, not, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into the legal, the legal aspects of it, but, you know, if he doesn't maintain his roof, and his roof does burn by fire, and it causes a fire next door, then you're exposing liability to, to the negligence of the homeowner. I think if our, the, one of our principles is to look at the safety of the community, I think reintroducing across-the-board wood products back into the approved list is, is retro, is gonna be counterproductive. I think we already have design review to review those, in, those folks that are interested in maintaining historical homes and putting wood roofs onto their homes. And, and typically, from what I understand, it, it's typically at even a greater cost. So I don't think they're gonna be prevented from doing so if someone who wants to maintain the original, originality of their home and architectural integrity still goes to design review for approval. But to say that anyone that wants to put a wood roof on their home can, I think it's gonna, it's not good precedent, set good precedent. And I, I honestly don't think, again, to the community members' comments, a homeowner is gonna go every year, or three years, or five years to go buy and reapply that retard, the fire retardant. Because if you do go down even that street that the, that the resident stated, and the remaining forty percent that do have wood roofs, I can almost guarantee you, if I'm familiar with that street enough, that the condition of those roofs are, are substandard. So that, that's my take. I would not be able to support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I was very surprised to see this. I didn't think we'd ever see natural wood shake again, anywhere. And I was equally surprised to hear that the fire department signed off on it. But because the fire department signed off on it, I am willing to support it for the probably pretty small percentage of people who, who do wanna do it. I will tell you, though, that I'm, I don't know if suspicious is the right word, but I do wonder about insurance companies, because we put a wood shake roof on our house in two thousand. And I don't know, somewhere around two thousand and ten, we couldn't get our house insured unless we put a fire alarm directly to our fire department in our ambulance. That was, that was requirement. So I'm just saying, that, that may, that may cause issues as well, that whether we, we approve it or not, you know, insurance companies wanna be sure your house doesn't burn down too, I'm happy to say. So, but I do think with, with the fire department's support, upgrading it to Class A, I could, I could support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki?
Yeah. I personally don't support it. I, I hate for us to go backwards. Once we made that decision, I think you should stick and just prohibit wood shingles as a product. Just go with a different product. I don't think we should allow it. It's a bad decision. Somebody's, I don't know. I would oppose it if I was voting.
Thank you. You know, I just realized I forgot to ask a couple of questions that I had for staff at the staff question time. So Director Cervantes, in the discussion portion of the staff report, it talks about how the, the city council directed staff to amend the building code to reintroduce roofing materials on the city's list, but with restrictions to ensure that fire safety is not compromised. So I wanted to ask some questions about that. What, what restrictions in particular would be part of that? I'm assuming one of them is that we're talking about only new roofs that are, that pressure-impregnated wood shingle or shake. Is that correct? Not, we're not talking about just a, apply a surface application of some product?
No, what makes a natural wood material Class A? At least, there's a number of things that, that do that. One of them is the treatment of the wood. And the second part of that is the underlayment. Usually you put a gypsum board as an underlayment, plus the felt paper, and everything combined makes it a Class A rating. And so that's the, the biggest And so that's the, the biggest restriction placed upon the code amendment for natural wood shake or shingles. There are some exceptions to the rules, and that is when you make a repair of less than five percent. In those cases, you're allowed to go back to a Class B, which is likely what is on the roof regardless. Because that was, been a longstanding standard of our city for Class B rating. The, the other provisions of the ordinance are that if you replaced us less than half of the roof, I believe it's thirty percent is the standard, then only the, the area that you replace has to meet the Class A rating. The rest of it could remain where the classification is at the moment. Once you go beyond that threshold, then the entire roof has to be replaced and re-put back as a Class A rated roof. And so those are, those are the restrictions that were placed in the code amendment.
So, because that was, that was exactly where I was going with my, when I was researching this. It became clear to me that it's really the construction of the roof that is critical in addition to the, the chemicals that are applied. So that's all in the code now then, or it's, it would be included in what we would be, okay, thank, thank you, that helps. I just, this is a really difficult item for me because, you know, for the types of, for a large amount of the housing stock in, in our city, there is nothing more aesthetically pleasing that would fit on those homes than a authentic wood roof. But I also remember from, from my earlier days, you know, the Bel Air Fire, the Puente Hills Fire, the Chatwood, Chat, Chatsworth Fire. Those were just horrific events. And I think I, I tend to side with Commissioner Chang on this. I don't know that, I'm not opposed to a wood shake roof or a wood shingle roof being allowed in the city. But that's different than saying it's going to be pre-approved and available over the counter. I, I think, I would, I would love to have a heart-to-heart talk with Chief Rueda where he was not under any duress to answer in a particular way. And I'd like to know what his thoughts on it are because I did a lot of reading this afternoon from the Los Angeles Fire Department. And they really have no confidence in the testing that is done to determine Class A fire ratings for these products. I, the only thing that I read in my research that made me feel a little better was the fact that it really, as Director Cervantes mentioned, it's the underlayment and the construction methods that are used for the roof that really help boost that. But I, I just, I just don't know that I can go with it being on the pre-approved list as opposed to it's an available thing for someone who's doing a historic restoration. Anyway, that's, I'm just really torn on this.
So Chair, can I ask a question to Aldo as well?
Yes, please.
So, Aldo, so do we have any sense or indication of how many disappointed applicants have come into DRC with a request to do a roof, a roof, a wood shingle roof and have been turned around or denied that ability through the DRC process?
Yeah, no, we haven't had any be denied because of, you know, the request of natural wood.
Right. But, but you wouldn't right now, would you? Because it's, it's prohibited, so.
Well, right, right now, so, so as a result of, let's say, let's say, for example, hypothetically, if the planning commission votes to not move forward on this, then being that is, it isn't, that it is in the code to allow it, those homes that have natural wood shake or shingle roofs right now would be allowed to continue to use them. Those homes that do not have natural wood shake or shingle roofs on there now and would like to have those products would have to go through design review for the wood roof. And so those, those with pre-existing conditions are allowed to continue those, that, that, that trend. And those that don't have them would require design review for their roofing material.
Let me ask a clarifying question. If, if someone with a pre-existing wood roof wants to replace it with another wood roof, are they bound by the Class A requirement or not? Under current, if you fail to pass this?
Yeah, so it really depends on how much they're looking to replace. If they pass that percentage threshold, then yes, the entire roof would have to come out and be replaced with Class A. If they don't pass that percentage threshold, then only the part replaced has to meet the Class A.
I see.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, since we're going back to questions, Aldo, I have a question for you as well. I need to make sure I was muted. So if I remember correctly, the reason that we moved away from wood shake was because we thought that state law was requiring us to do so. But then it came up that it actually, state law is only requiring us to do so when we were in high fire areas. And it turns out that we are not in a high fire area. Therefore, South Pass, Pasadena, San Gabriel, every community around us still allows wood shake, correct?
Right. Yeah, there, yeah, there was some impact to that, of course. We do have a high fire zone in our city. It is north of Lacy Park, it's a small pocket of, of homes up there that, you know, some have natural wood shake roof now. But that was one of the understandings. The other one was just the recommendation of the fire department at that time, mainly due to a number of fires that they had experienced with natural wood shake roofs. And they saw how it would spread, how a fire would, would have spread in those conditions. And so because of those experiences, the fire department recommended to eliminate the material altogether in two thousand and sixteen.
So we're, I'm sorry, just one more question. Were the fires in San Marino city limits? Because I know San Marino Fire Department is often the one that's called to our supporting cities.
No, there was, it was the, well, I want to say it's the, their, their global experience with the product. I, I can't honestly tell you if there was the experiences here in San Marino, but I think it's more of a general understanding of what the impact is.
I know that we're looking at roofing materials that mimic the shake roof, a concept. If things go well and these products come before the DRC and the planning commission, what kind of timeframe are we talking about? Is it four months, five months, would you say?
Yeah, so I'm, you know, Commissioner Brody is part of our roofing committee. And so we have some really good products that we have found through our efforts that I'm close to approaching the DRC with to recommend adding them to the pre-approved list. And of course, the planning commission will be the final step. And of course, Chair Dustin is also part of that committee and is aware of those materials. That, it doesn't take four, four months to get that down the road. I'm prepared to come back, at least go through the process within the next two months to get that down, down and hopefully approved if, if, if the planning commission sees fit.
So this interim solution, if, if I could refer to it as that, would be really a very short-term scenario. And perhaps not even necessary because for someone to replace a roof and then finding out, I like the shake look, I can't have the shake, but coming down the pike in another month and a half, two months, is this X, Y, Z product that I could put on my roof. You know, we really don't need this ordinance.
And the other thing that, that's worth also pointing out is that the planning commission can always remove a product from the list at any point. You're the, you're the, this, this body is sort of the, the keeper of that, of that list, or that material list. And in two months or in three months down the road, could, could make a motion to eliminate wood shake or shingles if it does end up being added to the list after tonight. And so just because it's on the list doesn't mean it has to stay there on that list.
Got it.
But I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So a homeowner could go to DRC and request a wood shake roof right now without this?
Yeah, just like any other roof material. So if someone wants to approach you with composition or, let's just say, the, the,
Steel, this steel roof.
Product, they'd have to go through a design review. And so if the motion fails to add this product on the list tonight, then it forces those individuals without wood shake or shingles currently to go through design review.
Okay. That was, my understanding was is that.
And, and again, another clarifying question. Another clarifying question, they're not, the homeowner with a wood shingle roof currently is not prevented from repairing or replacing up to thirty percent of that roof with the same material and not having to do meet the, the, the Class A requirement, right? Is that, is that correct, Aldo?
Right.
Right, so, so even for those homeowners that want to restore or maintain the existing look, they still have that ability. And if they, if it ends up being that the roof needs to be replaced, they, they have the option to get it replaced in its entirety with the upgrade, updated Class A option, correct?
Right.
All right, okay.
Are there any more questions or comments, or does someone have a motion? We're all really enthusiastic about this.
If you like, you can continue this till next month. And it might give some of you a, a little bit of time to talk to our fire department. Maybe what I can do is have the chief join me on that meeting. And you can ask him questions about what he thinks about this product or what have you. So I think that would actually, given the, the nature of some of the concerns.
I would, I would love that, yeah. Do we have a motion for a continuance?
Yeah, I'll move to continue. Actually, I'd like to move to continue two months, maybe we have some more primitive product. Anyway, yeah, I'll, I'll move to continue.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Chang frozen?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle? And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are getting down to the bitter end.
Close to eleven o'clock.
I know. And here I started off the meeting by saying we weren't going to get to that point. Resolution of findings for conditional use permit CUP nineteen-nine, design reviews number DRC nineteen twenty-seven HP, DRC nineteen twenty-eight, and DRC nineteen nine-seven at two-two-seven-five South Oakdale Avenue. Are there any comments on the resolution?
Of course. There actually are quite, there are quite a few problems with this one, people, so quick, though. There, you have a March twenty-fifth and a March twentieth date for our hearing. It was March twenty-fifth, so it needs to be consistent. All the whereas's should be all capitalized throughout, they're not. One of the whereas's, it says, whereas public hearing to consider said the, it should just delete the said. Section two and three, I don't know if those are the correct DRC numbers. I felt like they weren't the same that I saw somewhere else. So I don't know if there, yeah, there are a lot of them. And I think, I think maybe I was.
I'm missing, yeah.
I wasn't sure about that. And lastly, we have, I believe, the wrong date for when we, it says passed, approved, and adopted. On, oh, oh, you did fix that, okay, on this twenty-fourth day. All right, good, that's been fixed. Uh, okay, so that's just a few little comments.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Resolution number PCR twenty-one dash oh-five.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle? Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the late evening. And we'll see everybody next month.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have, be safe, everyone.
Bye.
Be safe.